Good evening and welcome to the Township of Woolwich regular meeting of council on September 9th, 2025. We welcome everyone here today and all those watching on YouTube and apologies for the late start. We had some extra business to attend to. I'll start with roll call of council. I'm Mayor Shontz and present and chairing this meeting, Council Brian.
Present.
Council Burgess.
Present.
Council Kado.
Present.
Council Grant.
Present.
And Council Schwent.
Present.
Before we get going on the agenda items, council needs to reconvene an open session, a motion to reconvene. Council Burgess and Council Bryant, all those in favor and that is carried, thank you. So it's September, we're back to school, we're looking at road safety. I just came from a full day at regional council and we talked about speed and safety, particularly around schools. And so I'll just take this opportunity to remind people to look out for our littles, as my sons call their kids. And, and, and take care particularly in the school zones. Also rail safety week is September 15th to 21st. And so a reminder to also be careful around the railways. Please join me in observing a moment of silence. Thank you. The Township of Woolwich acknowledges with deep respect that the land we call home has existed since time immemorial, long before our communities were formed and long before we arrived here. Indigenous peoples have had a deep and lasting relationship with this land, caring for it, learning from it, and living alongside all it sustains. We are grateful to the first peoples who have lived on and cared for this land and who continue to do so today. In particular, we recognize the Chinautin, also known as the Atawandran, the Anishinaabe and the Ohotunishoni peoples. We honor their deep connection to this land and we acknowledge their wisdom, resilience and leadership. These communities have protected and cared for the land with respect, responsibility and a sense of shared trust. As we move forward, we hope to build a future based on mutual respect, shared responsibility and stronger relationships with one another. May we continue to learn together, to care for each other and to honor all who share this place with us. Does, do council members have any declarations of pecuniary interest, Council Burgess?
Through you Mayor Shontz, I do have a pecuniary interest in item 4.6.2 for the playground financial contribution.
Thank you, anyone else? Thank you, we don't have any items to come forward from closed sessions, so we will get started on the public meeting, which is why I think most of you are here. For all those speaking to council tonight, once you're finished, you can return to your seat or virtual participants can turn off their mic and video. I don't think we have any virtual. All are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or leave when you wish. The following portion of the meeting is for information only and no decisions will be made tonight. Any questions can be directed to development services staff following the meeting. I declare the planning public meeting to be open. Yes, and if you want to receive updates from this meeting, please add your name to the signup list out in the foyer. At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to our direct, our manager of planning, Victor La Bresch, almost give you a promotion there.
Thank you Mayor Shontz, members of council, township staff and public. My name is Victor La Bresch, manager of planning and I'll be doing an overview PowerPoint presentation for this public meeting for these applications on behalf of Cache Homes and Dillon Consulting as their agent applicant for proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendments and draft plan of subdivision. As noted by Mayor Shontz, the, this report is for information and the presentation is for information to meet the statutory requirements of a public meeting. Within the agenda package pages 1 to 27 is our information report along with various attachments. The subject lands are located at the, I guess, north east corner of Victoria Street, currently known as also Highway 7 and Greenhouse Road, municipally addressed as 2590 Victoria Street North. It is approximately 20, 28 hectares in size, almost 70 acres. It is about 700 meters to the west of the intersection of Shontz Station and Victoria Street North. The purpose of the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment applications is to bring the township's Bresla settlement boundary into conformity with these lands in accordance with what's known as ROPA 6, Regional Official Plan Amendment 6, to include the lands within the urban area boundary, to change the land use designation of our official plan to low, medium density residential as well as medium, high residential and mixed use open space. The proposed zones on the property, which will be articulated more in a forthcoming plan on the screen, is to take it from agricultural zoning to residential 2 within our zoning bylaw, which is low density with some site specific provisions, also to R6 and R7, which are considered high density zones within our bylaw, also with specific provisions for mixed use, live work type buildings as well as open space zoned blocks within the plan. The explanation of the proposal would, with these amendments would result in single detached dwellings, townhouse dwellings, which would consist of row and lane style townhouses, medium and high density residential units. There are also other portions within the plan for public park, infrastructure, storm water management pond and of course the road system throughout the plan. So this shows the official plan amendments throughout the, the plan itself. The application requests the township's settlement boundary be brought into conformity with ROPA 6 over these lands as directed by the province to include lands within the urban area boundary. As per ROPA 6, the regional official plan does not identify these lands, sorry, does identify that these lands are within the Bresla settlement boundary area now. The lands are proposed to be included within the Bresla settlement as part of the township's official plan and Bresla secondary plan review. The application requests that the designations be updated to reflect their proposal and supporting studies with the areas identified for residential development. The application again proposes low, medium density residential designation, medium, high density residential designation, mixed use and open space designations. The zoning more specifically is listed on this plan. The current zoning of the property is basically agriculture today. The plan to the right, the larger plan, shows the proposed zones ranging from R2 to R7, which is in accordance with the zones within our current zoning bylaw. All of those zones will have site specific provisions on them for matters of reduced lot frontage, width, side yards, increased density and height in some cases. The zone again that are proposed are shown in the proposed text above the, the plan. The plan itself, the concept plan that's been provided with the submission proposes 193 single detached dwellings. There are a total of 49 blocks throughout the plan proposing 242 townhouse units, row townhouses, and those would be the more typical side by side townhouse dwellings. There are 24 blocks throughout the plan with a total of 145 lane style townhouse units. There is one block, the darker blue facing Victoria Street, which is a medium, high density residential proposal with 100 units there. There's one park block as well as two storm water management facilities. And of course, there's two, well, there's the public road systems, which include two access to Victoria Street North and one to Greenhouse. Current status of these applications, date of the application was received on April 9th. The date of the application being deemed complete, as provided in the form of a letter from the township to the applicants, confirmed retroactively it being deemed complete on April 9th. The date of notification circulated to all property owners within 150 meters of the property and as well as circulated to various departments, the region and several commenting agencies occurred on August 13th. The date of newspaper notice was on August 14th, date of webpage notice, August 13th. And of course today's is the public meeting. The dates preceding today's date are prescribed by legislation in the Planning Act and we've satisfied those requirements. The, talking further about the current status of the application, there's a long list of supporting studies that have been submitted with these applications and those are all listed here. The list of these supporting studies are typical with a draft plan of subdivision proposal, official plan and zoning amendment of this size, again typical of applications submitted to the township. The current status further, the application has been circulated, as I noted, to commenting agencies, internal departments, to the public and is within the review period at this time. In addition, several of the above submitted plans and studies on the preceding screen by the applicants are subject to peer review in accordance with our fees and charges peer review bylaw. Those are noted with an asterisk. Those peer review will party consultants on behalf of the township. Comments from peer review consultants on the identified studies will be provided to the applicants once received by us and reviewed together with, with the applicants at that time. We expect that there'll be a resubmission to address those comments, which again is most typical with a plan of subdivision and a resubmission occurring in the future. Once that resubmission is considered addressed and the, and the comments, staff will then prepare a recommendation report on the submitted application for this council's consideration. Again, once all comments and representations are known and can be considered by staff and council. So again, just in closing, the purpose is to provide information to council and to the public and to those interested parties in the area of Bresla and beyond. No decision is to be made at this public meeting. Staff will continue to work with the applicant and the public and provide a report back to council after all topics have been addressed. And my contact information is there on the screen as the assigned planner to this, to these applications. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. La Bresch, Council Bryant?
Thank you, through you to Victor. One question, I noticed the subdivision has two access points going onto Highway 7. Will there be lights there because that's a very busy road and I know there is a light at the corner of Greenhouse currently.
Through Mayor Shontz, to Council Bryant, the application is certainly, as I mentioned, in the circulation review period and in that regard primarily by MTO Ministry of Transportation. They certainly hit on submissions by the applicant sort of as a preliminary and advised on various standards that they need in terms of, you know, distance separation to access points, a distance from Greenhouse Road intersection and even up to Shontz Station Road to, to the east. So I can't directly answer your question because it's mostly subject to MTO's comments and that's ongoing.
Thank you.
And now Highway 7 will be built shortly, right? You mean 2050? Sorry, I couldn't resist, Council Kado.
Mayor, through you to Mr. La Bresch. The plan showed that there were two storm water management ponds. In the fullness of time when the township assumes roads and such, will we also assume those storm water management ponds? And if so, is there a need for two? I'm just being mindful of our current cleaning out of the storm water drain on First Avenue and that comes with a pretty hefty price tag.
Yes, and through Mayor Shontz to Council Kado, the, again, the need for two, the size of it and the details of it is under review. Always from my experience over the years, minimizing the amount of storm water management ponds is always prudent for the developer as well as the municipality. I think initially their engineering review and comments required two, but that is again subject to further review going forward.
And ownership in the fullness of time would fall back to the township?
Yes, I'm sorry didn't answer that part of the question, but correct, yes, it would. Once all works are completed to our satisfaction.
Sorry. Anyone else? Okay, thanks. We have two registered participants for this public meeting and we'll start with consultant Michelle McCarthy of Dillon Consulting. Michelle.
Welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Madam Chair, members of council, staff and all in attendance this evening. My name, as you mentioned, is Michelle McCarthy, I'm with Dillon Consulting Limited and I'm joined this evening by Phil Sheridan with SCS Consulting Group and Erica Bailey of Paradigm Transportation Solutions, as well as Jessie Hong with Cache. Further to Mr. La Bresch's presentation and report, we're here on behalf of the landowner Cache to present their development proposal for their lands in Bresla. And as mentioned in the presentation earlier, this meeting represents an opportunity to share information and to hear from stakeholders in the community. It's just, it's a component of the planning process and, and as noted, no decisions are to be made this evening. I will, I will attempt to be brief because there is quite a bit of crossover between my presentation and Mr. La Bresch's. So the site is located at 2590 Victoria Street North at the intersection of Victoria and Greenhouse. It's 28 acres and seven, sorry, 28 hectares and 70 acres. It's currently vacant and used for agricultural purposes. To the north, we have the planned Highway 7 realignment that extends across the entire property line and based on the preliminary design of that highway, although I understand the running joke, house road as far as we understand it today. Rural residential uses are located to the east. The site abets obviously Highway 7, current Highway 7 to the south and the Belgian Nursery on the south side of Victoria. There is a draft approved plan of subdivision on the lands on the south side of Victoria that was originally intended for employment uses and is currently being contemplated for residential use. There's a cemetery and funeral home also just shown on the bottom right hand side of the, this slide here. On the west side of the site, west of Greenhouse Road are agricultural uses and on the south side of Victoria, west of Greenhouse Road, the Thomas Field Hopewell Crossing subdivision is currently under construction. The site, as Mr. La Bresch mentioned, is within the Bresla settlement boundary as established by Regional Official Plan Amendment 6 and the township is in the process of completing the Bresla secondary plan review and in tandem with the official plan review, which proposes to include these lands within the Bresla settlement boundary. And that is also reflected on the preferred Bresla land use plan, which was endorsed by council in February of this year. The land use proposed is consistent with the land use, uses identified on that plan as well. So an official plan amendment, zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan of subdivision are required to facilitate the development of these lands. And the vision for this community includes a range of residential uses, as mentioned, including single detached homes and a mix of townhomes, a medium density apartment building and a large central park. There is a total of 680 units being proposed with 193 of those being single detached. 242 are standard street townhouses and 145 are rear lane townhomes and apartment building. The park is 1.5 hectares or nearly four acres, which I noticed there's a typo on that slide. The proposed development can be accommodated by municipal services as outlined in the functional servicing report and interim servicing strategy that Mr. La Bresch mentioned. And the sanitary servicing proposal includes the installation of a sub trunk sewer in the reconstructed Greenhouse Road that would temporarily connect to the sewer on Hopewell Crossing Drive. The Bresla land use plan identifies two planned elementary schools and a future high school on the south side of Victoria in close proximity to the site. And the community has also been designed to promote pedestrian connectivity throughout, including sidewalks on both sides of the street and walkway connections between blocks so that people can easily access the park and future infrastructure on Victoria Street. And this is just another visual for those that prefer simplified graphics. So the yellow are single detached or townhomes, pink is the rear lane towns, the purple is the medium density block and then green represents the park space and storm water management ponds. Cache has actively participated in the Bresla secondary plan process since its outset. A pre-consultation application was submitted in October of 2024. Planning applications were then submitted to the township in April and the submission was deemed complete. And similar to the presentation before, the long list of supporting studies are listed on this slide, which I will not go through in detail. We have included some renderings to illustrate the, the type of quality housing that Cache plans to build in this neighborhood. And keep in mind that these are renderings, they have not been through detailed design for this community, particularly are similar Cache product built in, in other areas. And so these are the, the single detached homes being planned for 30 and 36 foot frontages. This is a rendering of the, the townhomes. The rear lane towns, both the front and the rear facade there. And the multi-residential block, this is a rendering as well, obviously. And, and this block is intentionally flexible and expected to be aligned with the mixed use node proposed through the, the preferred Bresla land use plan. In this area, the plan represents an opportunity to accommodate medium density and a range of complementary neighborhood commercial uses on the ground floor. The residential uses are intended to be designed in a variety of sizes from bachelor to multi-bedroom apartments and, and to accommodate a range of household makeup and income levels. The ground floor spaces are envisioned to animate the street with businesses like cafes, maybe a small scale grocer, restaurants with patios and, and draw people in and out of that, that ground floor, out onto the sidewalks and throughout the neighborhood. And as part of this process, we do want to hear from stakeholders to better understand what, what types of community uses would be appropriate and beneficial to complement this area. And that could be anything from seniors housing to daycares to personal or professional services on the ground floor of a mixed use building like this. And further detailed design of this block will come at later stages of the process. As mentioned, the intent with this proposal is to create a community that's aligned with the land use and densities proposed through the Bresla Preferred Land Use Plan. The proposal provides of housing options and densities aligned with not only the recommendations of the Woolwich Housing Needs Assessment from last year, but also recent provincial and federal direction to build a wide range of housing quickly. Cache is committed to continuing to engage with the township and the region to explore and implement strategies to accelerate housing options in Bresla. And the community is designed to avoid or mitigate any impact to natural heritage features adjacent to the parcel. Proposal supports active transportation opportunities through the sidewalk network, obviously, and the large central park. And it will have access to the recommended sidewalk and cycling route on Victoria Street in the future. The site's well connected to the local transportation network through Victoria Street North and future realigned Highway 7 and is near the planned go station in Bresla. And gaps in the community's transit service are noted, being limited to the on-demand service of Route 79. So Cache's vision for their lands is aligned with the guiding principles of the Bresla secondary plan and positively contributes to diverse housing options for the current and future residents of Woolwich and the region of Waterloo. And the community would incorporate medium density housing options and address identified need in Bresla while providing still the traditional detached homes that have been built in Bresla to date more commonly. Thank you for your attention this evening and we're happy to take questions that you might have.
Thank you, Council. Are there any questions for Ms. McCarthy? Council Grant?
Thank you. So you mentioned pedestrian walkways. I'm wondering if there's any thought of putting a pedestrian walkway on Highway 7? Just, just cognizant of the fact that you may have students or anything walking on that and that is a current highway, although how long and it may be? I'm just wondering if you've had any thought along that, just because that is a busy corridor.
Absolutely, and through Mayor Shontz to Council Grant, that is something that is contemplated and planned for. That being said, we recognize that we need to consult both, a variety of stakeholders. I will leave it at that on the, at the ultimate design there, but the intent is that there would be a pedestrian connection across that frontage.
Okay, and then I'm going to probably ask a difficult question because it's future casting for a potential Highway 7. I noticed that the access points are all along the current Victoria Road. Is there thought of potentially accessing the new Highway 7, should it ever exist, for the, the streets along the back of the, the property now?
Again, through you Mayor Shontz, I would say, my anticipation is that MTO would not be supportive of such access, but we will, we will absolutely take their comments and work with the MTO directly on that. The plan as of, as of right now is not to have any connection.
I'm just wondering, like, traffic flow and how people access the subdivision with a potential Highway 7, whatever it may look like in the future. And sorry, then my last and only question is regarding affordable and market value houses for medium density. Do you have a plan of like a certain allotment of affordable housing within those, those units?
Through you Mayor Shontz, we would be open to having a conversation with the, both the township and likely the service provider being the region to understand the need and, and we don't have details on that at this time. And we don't have details on that at this time. Happy to take that back, though. And if I may just add to the question around access, currently the access, there's two accesses proposed on the existing Victoria Street, and those are intended to be right in, right out at this time, pending no comments being received yet from the circulation.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll call on Hugh Handy. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Shontz. Thank you, Mayor Shontz, members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hugh Handy, and I'm a vice president of GSP Group and a professional land use planner. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm here on behalf of our client, Thomas Field Homes, who are well known to this council, staff and the township in general. I would also like to introduce Tom McLaughlin behind me, who is the vice president of Thomas Field Homes with me this evening, and also Patrick Casey on my other side. Patrick is a land use planner that works at GSP, is involved in a number of Thomas Field projects with me and the township. GSP Group has submitted separate letters on behalf of Thomas Field Homes and EB Crest Kitchener Developments, which is at Fountain Street and Highway seven, the current, which are in your council package. I'm here this evening specifically on behalf of Thomas Field Homes to highlight some of the major concerns with the planning applications before you this evening. Thomas Field is not opposed to development in the Brazla area. Thomas Field, as council and staff will be aware, has developed multiple properties in the Brazla area over the past 20 years, including Hopewell Heights and the Hopewell Crossing subdivisions. What is deeply concerning about the application by Cachet Homes is the complete disregard for the policies and processes of the township and essentially jumping the queue on the logical progression for development. We've had our consulting engineers, Crozier Engineering, review the documentation provided as part of the planning applications to prepare our comments that are before you in written form this evening. To this end, we believe that Cachet's servicing strategy is based on incorrect assumptions. Thomas Field has had no discussions at this point with Cachet Homes regarding the servicing through their Hopewell Crossing subdivision. Cachet has assumed that given proposed long-term servicing strategies by the township as part of the draft Brazla Secondary Plan, that flows from Cachet Development can be redirected through the Hopewell Crossing subdivision. The Hopewell Crossing sanitary pumping station was constructed by Thomas Field for Thomas Field's projects, including the Bisgould Lands, and that is the land directly across that was in previous presentations by the applicant and Mr. Lebrushe. And those included, as I said, the Bisgould Land, which are part of the draft plan of subdivision, Hopewell Crossing, which was approved in 2016. Accordingly, and in summary, the development applications, in our opinion and my opinion, fail to present a workable servicing strategy. The development applications propose a servicing scheme that is out of alignment with the servicing strategy for the Brazla area. And therefore, we believe the subdivision and related planning applications are premature at this time and will result in an inefficient delivery of municipal services, fragmented growth patterns, essentially leapfrogging of development, current development and planned development, and unintended consequences for existing neighborhoods and planned development. We thank you for considering our comments this evening. We realize it's early in the process and, as I said, we support development, but in a logical manner. And we would be happy to answer any questions myself or Tom or Patrick. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Handy? No, I'm not seeing any. Thank you for presenting to us tonight. So I understand that we have one unregistered participant, and that would be Sandra Bray. You're sitting behind the chief. Now I see you.
I know, I had to sit in the middle because I wasn't too sure which side I was aligning with. Good evening, Mayor Shontz, and our excellent councillors and staff. And I'm here tonight representing Apt Environment. Apt Environment says that climate ambition is key to Woolwich's prosperity. So I have some questions. Embridge Gas has offered subsidies to enable builders to build energy efficient homes at no extra cost to the builders. A builder can build fifty subsidized Energy Star homes and one showcase home, which is a net zero home. So what I'm wondering is whether or not Cachet will be building fifty Energy Star homes and maybe it's one showcase net zero ready home in Woolwich. We would be very happy to see that if that was to happen. Is there, do I get answers to questions as I ask them now, or what do I do?
Staff will keep track of your questions, and then when the final report comes in, they'll incorporate answers into that final report.
Okay, thank you. I'll make sure you get a copy.
Thank you.
I'm also wondering whether or not there's a cost comparison between building with natural gas versus building all electric. We have in Building Knowledge in Guelph can do that cost comparison in its computers probably within 20 minutes. And it would be really good to know what the difference might be. I'm also wondering what the projected peak natural gas use would be in this new subdivision. You should always check my numbers, but to me, it looks like about a million cubic meters of gas per year. And as you know, we have to already reduce by 6.7 million cubic meters per year. So this is a major concern. And I'm also wondering who will be responsible for reducing these emissions in the future to hit the net zero, the Woolwich net zero target? Will it be the builder? Council? The community? Maybe the new homeowners? I don't know. Maybe if it's going to be them, maybe they should be advised that they're going to have some very big retrofitting costs. That's number four. Number five, okay. In this proposed development, I'm wondering whether or not the homes and street orientations, I couldn't tell totally, would facilitate maximum solar gain in 15 years when the gas furnaces require replacement with some other form of energy? This is the time to align the streets and the houses, right? So I think that would be a good one to get taken care of at the beginning. The other thing is, will there be land allocated for a district energy plant when natural gas is no longer available? And if solar orientation hasn't been planned in or if there isn't enough solar orientation to power that subdivision? District energy is going to take a little bit of space in that plan. The space should be planned in advance. Speaking of, I saw there was a fiscal impact study. I thought, well, that was interesting. I wonder if anybody has calculated what the dollar amount leaving our local economy each year to pay for natural gas would be in this subdivision? If we produce, sorry, let me spec up. If the subdivision produces its own electricity through solar or through a district energy plant, that money would stay in the community. That's a lot of money, a million cubic meters of gas a year. You should check my figures again, but I figure it's about $330,000 just for that one subdivision. And for the actual, for the township of Woolwich, it's millions every year that we send out of our community for fossil fuels. Millions and millions. So it really does make a difference. Oh, and my last point or question is, I don't know whether or not Cachet Homes and the planning department are aware. There's been two new international advisories by international courts. And I realize we're kind of a long ways away from an international court. But in Canada, international courts, when they set a standard, it's expected that all the signatory countries to that court will incorporate those standards in their national laws. And we are a signatory to both the International Court of Justice and to the Inter-American Court of Human Rights. So I'm just going to let you know, from the International Court of Justice, this has just come out in the last two or three months, so it's probably pretty new. But the, I'm going to quote here, "Failure of a state to take appropriate action to protect the climate system from greenhouse gas emissions, dot, 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 including through fossil fuel consumption, may constitute an internationally wrongful act, which is attributable to that state." This was a ruling on July 23rd. So in the big picture, the direction has been set for us. And now, I mean, we all knew this point was coming. This is rocket science. We knew this point was coming, and it's here, and it's a hard point. I'm really grateful you're the council that has to deal with it because I know you are all such people of conscience. I know every single one of you, I really do. I feel that strongly, and I feel we're so lucky. Your backgrounds are varied, your ages are varied, your interests are varied. So I'm sorry that you're in a tough spot, and I think this is a hard one for sure. But really, we don't want to be left with a mess to pick up after. Now, this is the community speaking, okay? This is the people who are still responsible right now for 6.7 cubic, or million cubic meters. We're supposed to reduce our natural gas every year. So please think carefully about a. Natural gas. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just hang on. Are there any questions? No questions. Thanks. So there are no further speakers?
There's no one that is indicated online or in person if they wish to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you. Then I declare the planning public meeting closed. Thank you. Okay, we have one presentation tonight on the audited financial statements, and I will call on Director of Finance and our Treasurer, Colm Lynn.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Shontz, to the rest of council. We have Katie Denbok on the line. She's from KPMG. And she's filling in for Matt Beddick. He normally delivers this presentation, but he's on sabbatical right now, and Katie's filling in. She'll go through her own presentation, but we also attached a staff report to this. And we just identified some key risks or wanted to highlight some key risks that the auditor identified. Not that these are risks that are necessarily influencing the audit, but I just thought it was useful information for council to know that these are kind of high areas that the audit identified in their presentation. The first is management overrides of financial controls. So even with the best financial information in place, it is up to staff and council to also, to do best practices and make sure those controls are actually followed. Another item that they'll go into is the obligatory reserve and deferred revenue. And that refers really to DCs and the complexity of the legislation around the development charges and accounting for those and a lot of the changes. And I think the new analyst that will be onboarded on September 22nd will really help with some of understanding of that. There's also the TCAs or tangible capital assets, the backlog, which we previously identified. And that's another item that we're addressing through that new position to be onboarded on September 22nd. And then finally, there's a, just a risk around post-employment benefits because it deals with a lot of estimates and a lot of uncertainty around there. But also, we've looked into that, and we'll be discussing things like that upcoming during the budget discussions as well. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Katie, and she can walk through the audit presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Can you all hear me?
Okay, and see the screen that I'm sharing as well?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. And through you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to walk council through our audit findings report for the township for the year ended December 31st, 2024. And just as a broad reminder of the reason why we put this report together in the first place, one, it's a means for us to communicate with you anything we are required to communicate under Canadian auditing standards, to bring forward anything noteworthy that was identified during the course of our audit, as well as to share just some additional information that we feel might be useful to you in your oversight role over the external audit process. And so I will walk through the highlights of our presentation on behalf of Matt, who really was the audit partner, who was involved in the planning and the review of the file and everything. I'm just delivering the results here tonight. And so I think the first thing I would like to touch base on is the status of the audit. So the audit is essentially complete. The only items that remain outstanding at this point in time are the receipt of certain legal confirmation letters, which we've asked to be received towards the end of this month. Having our conversations with council here this evening, obtaining evidence of the approval of the financial statements, at which point we will send a management representation letter to be signed. And once all of those items are complete, we anticipate being able to issue a clean or an unmodified auditor's report over the financial statements. One item I'd like to bring to your attention that's in the report here is our materiality level that we use. So just for your information, that's sort of the highest benchmark or threshold that we use when it comes to determining where within the financial statements there might be a risk of material misstatement. And then from there, a more important number is really what we call our audit misstatement posting threshold, which would be 5% of that $800,000 number. And that's the number at which we would report back to you in this audit findings report, any corrected or uncorrected audit misstatements that we identify. And happy to report that we did not identify any such matters, but just wanted to make it clear to you what thresholds we were using in conducting our work. As Colm mentioned, right of controls, which basically just recognizes that because of the position that management is in, they may have the ability to override controls that are in place. So it is a fraud risk that we address in every audit. We have required procedures, including review of journal entries, any significant unusual transactions or any areas of significant estimate. And happy to report, we have no findings or matters to report as a result of those procedures. There is a couple of other items here that I won't go through in too much detail, but areas where we've noted other risks of material misstatement. So as Colm mentioned, areas where there may be some complexity, some estimates involved, we have listed for you here the procedures that we performed with respect to obligatory reserve funds and deferred revenue, no matters to note. With respect to TCA, we did note that the construction in progress is something that will continue to be monitored and as a result of it increasing over the past several years. And understand that there's an additional position that is being, has been hired to focus on this activity. So encouraging the continual monitoring of those to ensure that amounts are being adjusted and recorded appropriately. And post-employment benefits is one that we consider to be a risk, an other risk. I'll say not necessarily a heightened risk, but just due to the estimates that are involved in coming up with that. We also have certain required inquiries of council. So we are required to obtain your views about fraud risks, whether there are any fraud risks that you're aware of, any actual or alleged fraud that you're aware of. and just ask that you report that to us. And the contact information for, for Matt is at the, the beginning of this presentation, so you know how to reach us if you do have anything to report. As mentioned, we did not identify any corrected or uncorrected misstatements as a result of our audit procedures. And we also did not identify any significant control deficiencies through the work that we performed. There were some new accounting standards that were required to be adopted during the year. So those include PS thirty-four-hundred, which is a new revenue standard, a standard relating to purchased intangibles, as well as public-private partnerships. Those standards have been implemented and did not have a significant impact on the township. But you will see in the financial statements additional note disclosures related to those. No matters to report in terms of specific topics or other financial reporting matters. We do identify here, as we are required to be, we are independent of the township. It's what allows us to issue an independent auditor's report, but just confirming that back to you here. And part of that is the communication of the agreement of fees for the year. And in the appendices, we've included for you some additional required communications, including a copy of our management representation letter, some information on how we deliver audit quality, some information on upcoming accounting standard changes and auditing standard changes, as well as some thought leadership around hot topics around council and board tables, as well as some information for you on ESG, which is really just for your consideration. And, and that sort of wraps up the highlights of our audit findings report. I am happy to take questions if anyone has questions.
Thank you very much, what questions might council have? Counselor Bryant?
Thank you, through you to the auditor. I guess my big question is the post-employment benefits, including the sick leave liability. I'm looking at the number of one-point-one-seven million. Could you explain what that number includes, please?
Sure, if you look to Note Seven of the financial statements, it does provide a little bit more detail about how that number breaks down. So it includes extended health and dental benefits of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, as well as sick leave of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. And these amounts are actuarially valued. And so, when it comes to auditing these numbers, we do rely on the actuary to provide the numbers based on the inputs provided by the township.
So just for clarity, that two, two-hundred-and-fifty-some-thousand for sick leave, is that dollars that have been accumulated by staff, is that where that number comes from?
Yes, that would represent the amount that the township would owe at the end of December twenty-twenty-four relating to sick leave.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Schwint?
Thanks, a couple of questions. Does this audit also cover council committees like the BIAs?
So it is, it is the audit of the consolidated financial statements. So as part of that, we do, we do consider the BIAs, and we look at their sort of dollar values in relation to the main township financial statements when it comes, any work that we might do over them.
So they've looked at it any period of time, I was at a BIA meeting last night. My understanding is there's been no review since twenty-twenty-two. So just, how frequently do we look at them, and to what degree?
So in terms of the consolidated financial statements, we would do an analysis on an annual basis around whether they represented significant components of the township. If they did not represent significant components, we then wouldn't perform additional audit procedures over them, because they wouldn't be considered necessary from a materiality perspective for us to issue an audit opinion on the consolidated financial statements as a whole. I am not able to speak to any sort of standalone work that might have been done over the BIAs. I just haven't been involved myself in that work.
So, sorry for it to be substantial, does that have to meet that eight-hundred-thousand-dollar threshold?
No, um, no, there's a, a smaller threshold that we look at when it comes to scoping what we call significant components as part of a consolidated audit. So it's, it's usually a much smaller number, but it's in relation to total revenues and total assets of the consolidated group. So it's actually irrespective of that eight-hundred-thousand-dollar materiality level that I mentioned.
Go ahead, Counselor Schwint.
Okay, so, moving on to the materiality component, what kind of reason this test does audit entail? We've had many discussions at this table about our water and wastewater division, and definitely there's errors there, they're six figures and more. Curious how those errors could be caught during a audit process if we're buying X dollars and invoicing X hundred-thousand-dollar worth of water or sewer capacity.
So, I will say, I guess what I can say is the, the procedures that we would perform when it comes to water and wastewater would be in relation to any revenues or any expenses that have been recorded within the books or records of the, the township. I, I can't speak to what, to any errors you may be referring to. We did not identify any errors as part of our audit procedures over the water and wastewater transactions.
So your review would basically tell us that everything is being reported correctly without really analyzing why a number might be as it is? So if there is a discrepancy, say a big discrepancy from one year to the next, would that show up to you?
Yeah, so the procedures that we perform specifically around expenditures would include both substantive analytical procedures, which would involve comparisons year-over-year of dollar value spends, as well as substantive vouching to external support. We try to cover off, or we do cover off both the existence and the accuracy and the completeness of expenditures that are recorded. So we also have procedures we perform to, to validate that transactions have been reported in the correct period. But that is all as they relate to the financial statements as a whole. It doesn't extend necessarily to procurement policies or compliance with those. That would be more of an internal audit focus area.
Thank you, Counselor Schwint.
So it appears to me that our internal controls and our external controls missed reconciling hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of water and wastewater purchases and sales, I want to call it, over the last year or two. I'm wondering how we should be catching that faster, both internally and externally.
Do you have some insights on that?
Is that question directed to myself?
Yes.
So, without knowing the exact nature of the discrepancies that you're referring to, I don't feel that I can comment on it at this time, but happy to, to provide a, a follow-up response once I've had a chance to understand the situation more fully.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
If I can help, not to put words in the auditor's mouth, they're very independent, but they're just looking to make sure that what's recorded in our financial statements are accurate. So they wouldn't necessarily know that something's missing that isn't there, that should be there. For example, if we should have sewer billing and we don't have sewer billing, they wouldn't necessarily know that that's missing, just like we wouldn't necessarily know it's missing. It's not part of their testing to say that that's the, the right number that should be in there. It's just that's what's being recorded is factually accurate and complete. So that might help a little bit of why she wouldn't necessarily notice something that isn't there, that maybe should be there, just from a billing perspective.
Don't belabor this too much, but this is a big one. And I don't think it's out of the realm of reasonableness that reasonable checks should be done. We bought a million liters of water, did we sell approximately a million liters of water? And some sort of cross-reference be done, both internally and externally on an audit like this? Do I expect to a few decimal places? No, but within X percent, yes, or at least a check. It doesn't seem like we are doing those checks internally or externally. And I guess, expectation I would have as a business owner running a business.
Mr. Brennan?
I, I think we should definitely recircle or circle back to this discussion. I believe the staff report spoke to the fact that that sort of reconcili, reconciliation that you speak of is one of the actions that needs to be a regular type of, of, of process and practice to be able to make sure that, again, like many other actions we'll talk about later, need to be done to address the current situation.
So, we'll circle back in another report then. Is there anything else on the audit? Okay, thank you, Ms. Denbok. Appreciate the, the report, I don't, is there a recommendation on here? Ah, yes, there is. Moved by Counselor Grant, seconded by Counselor Cadeau, all those in favor? That's carried, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We have one consent item for approval. Does anyone want to talk about that? No, did I miss something? I feel like I'm on the wrong page, okay. It's adoption, oh, it's just adoption of the minutes. All those in favor, mover and a seconder, sorry, Counselor Grant, Counselor Bryant, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. There's just no unfinished business. We do have some council business, and for staff report, I will call on Mr. Lynn to talk about our surplus deficit distribution.
Through you, Mayor Shants, to councils. So, we're straddling three different financial years at the moment. So the auditor spoke, and the financial statements that we just reviewed were related to the twenty-twenty-four results. So this report is also related to twenty-twenty-four, last year. Previously, I spoke to the Q-two variance, which is the twenty-twenty-five item. And then we'll also be talking about budget parameters, which is twenty-twenty-six. So, just trying to keep everyone clear of kind of what year we're referring to. So, this is very much similar to the Q-four report that I shared earlier. Staff report F, F-eleven twenty-twenty-five, which was a Q-four final kind of variance report. It's very similar to what was presented previously, but these are just kind of the final numbers after the audit that we can report. And so we have a twenty-twenty-four tax-supported capital surplus, which is essentially unspent capital that was levy-supported, infrastructure levy at this point. And that was a hundred-and-thirty-thousand surplus, so that was unspent at the end of the year. So that goes back into the reserve that we're recommending. The tax-supported operating deficit was the, the final number was four-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight. So that's being recommended to be drawn from the operating contingency reserve, again from twenty-twenty-four. And then the water operating was a hundred-and-forty-four-thousand, and the wastewater operating was eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight, sorry, eight-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand deficit. And those will both be drawn from the water and wastewater contingency reserves that we set up last year. There unfortunately isn't sufficient balances in those reserves to fund the full amount, especially for waste, so the remaining balance then would be offset against the capital reserve, which is our standard practice. And we show the table with the current draws from the reserves and the reserve balances as a result of this. Not all of this, these reserve balances don't necessarily match with the budget twenty-twenty-five reserve tables that I showed, because these, we're just looking at these in isolation, but the other ones incorporated all the revenues and the projections for the other reserves. But happy to answer any questions, again, this is related to the twenty-twenty-four year that we just finished.
If I can start off with a question. The, so, so taking money from the capital to offset the water and wastewater, will that be recorded and rebalanced at some point in the future, potentially?
Through you, Mayor Shants, so, because we only have so much in that operating contingency reserve, or the wastewater and wastewater contingency reserve, we didn't, we just started it last year. So we would draw it then from the capital, and that's, but the previous deficits, they've come from the capital reserves. They're replenished every billing cycle, essentially with that reserve charge that's on the water bills. So we put a pause on capital spending for twenty-twenty-five, so those reserve balances will increase. These are just looking at the twenty-twenty-four year-end balances, and then taking off the deficit, where that forecast that I shared with council has more projections for the end of the year, so there are higher balances than this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Schwint?
Sorry, I made a mistake on our last item. I wonder if I dodged and go backwards. On the financials, we have forty-seven million dollars' worth of assets under construction. That just seems like a huge number that are under construction this period of time.
So, through you, Mayor Shants, it is definitely a huge number. That's the tangible capital assets number, so that's that TCA backlog. So essentially, a lot of the capital projects that were, that were finished haven't necessarily been recorded properly in our books. So it's sitting there as kind of in-progress capital, and that's that TCA backlog that I refer to, to council. And the new position is hopefully going to address it, it's about a five-year capital backlog.
It's one thing not to have them all logged and into the system, but not start amortizing them when it's five years old makes no sense to me. How do we get a clean audit opinion?
So, so those are in progress because we, because they're backlogged. Will we expect in the twenty-twenty-five budget, and sorry if I can't keep everything straight, but are we expecting in the twenty-twenty, I guess it'd be twenty-twenty-six budget to be able to have that cleaned up and, and start amortizing it?
Through you, Mayor Shants, Counselor Schwint is exactly correct. That's why it is a, a very concerning number, because some of those assets have been in service for over five years. So there should be amortization expenses against that, and it is a very large number, forty-seven million in construction in progress. So there's amortization expense against that. But we are working out this new position, coming onboard on September twenty-second, we'll be addressing that backlog. It is a five-year backlog, so it's unlikely that the twenty-twenty-five financial statements will fully address that CIP backlog. It'll probably take the better part of a year to address that. But the auditor did say, they did identify that in their audit findings, and they just want to make sure that we're actually making progress towards reducing that backlog balance, which we will be this year, because it's just been growing every year, the last few years.
Just curious, will we, will there be a catch-up on the amortization, or will we start amortizing as a single year?
Through you, Mayor Shants, normally there would be a catch-up. We'd have to know like what year those projects were in service, what type of projects. Again, they're just identified as construction in progress, they could be facilities, they could be roads, they could be bridges with different useful lives. But once we identify those assets and we can record them on the books, then we can start amortizing them. Also, I might as well mention it here that we also assume assets from developers. So those are the assets that we've constructed ourselves, so we have the costs. There's also additional assets that we've assumed from developers, and that's a very substantial number as well, that we should be putting on our books and amortizing as well on top of that.
So we'll see some of that in the twenty-twenty-five year-end, and then the rest of it in twenty-twenty-six. Thank you. Anyone else? We do have a recommendation here as well. Someone like to move it? Counselor Cadeau, seconded by Counselor Bryant. All those in favor? That's carried, thank you. The next item is the Winterbourne Playground Financial Contribution, and Evan, you've declared a conflict. I'll call on Acting Deputy Director of Recreation. I'll call on Acting Deputy Director of Recreation and Community Services, Thomas Vanderhoff, who is online. Hi, Thomas.
You guys hear me all right?
You're hard to hear. Can you?
I'll speak up maybe. Is that better?
That's better. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Good evening, council. Tonight, RCS has before you RO4 2025 Winterbourne Playground Financial Contribution Report. So I'll start off by just sending, passing along regrets from the principal of Foundation Christian School. He wasn't able to make it tonight. They're away on an overnight school field trip, so. But the township was approached by Earthscapes Play, a playground manufacturer out of just north, just west of the township here. Wanted to, with a proposal, I suppose, to, to donate a playground to the township, looking to have it installed in one of our parks in 2025. So a couple of considerations came to the mind of staff. We looked firstly at our existing assets just to see if there was a playground that, that could be replaced. We have gone through a significant replacement of playgrounds since 2017. So nothing came to mind there. We also looked at new development parkland that's coming online, but timing did not really align with, with moving forward in 2025. The second consideration that we had and one that kind of came to the forefront of staff was addressing the longstanding absence of, of public parkland in Winterbourne and doing what we could do in that settlement to kind of push the, move the needle there. So council may be aware that the township historically donated the existing playground that's, that's on the school's property now in 2007. The master plan that we just completed as a department in 2024 also didn't, didn't provide a recommendation on this, but provided a suggestion that the township looked to continue to partner with the Foundation Christian School when possible. And so, so with that in mind, township staff reached out to the school and Earthscapes brought all three parties together, and there was interest by the school. And so hoping to move forward with that, staff have a recommendation, two recommendations before you this evening. And that's to make a financial contribution to assist with the installation of the playground at $25,000. And then also for the township to enter into an agreement with the school to permit public use of the playground. The latter of what the school has vocalized that, that they're open to do and, and, and welcome residents of Winterbourne to use, use their, their, their grounds after school hours. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Bryant?
Thank you. Through you to Thomas. I think it's great that we're moving ahead with this, as Winterbourne has been looking for some park space for a long, long time. And I'm glad to see that the school is stepping up and are willing to share their facilities with the community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Someone like to move the recommendation? Counselor Grant, Counselor Bryant, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. I'll wait for Evan before we move on to the bylaws. If we can find him. He was anticipating a longer report, I think. Never let him take his spot. Welcome back. So the next section is bylaws, and we have a number of bylaws listed on the agenda. Counselor Schwint?
Could we pull those until next meeting for council? A little more discussion on the fireworks bylaw. We had a short or a small group last meeting, we first looked at this, and I think there's some more questions have come forward, but not enough time to talk to staff about them.
Clerk, can we do that?
Yes, you may. Then we just look for a resolution to presumably pass bylaw 382025, which is the, just the confirming bylaw tonight.
Okay, you're moving the confirming bylaw? Do we need, before we do that, do we need a motion on the other ones, or will you'll just bring them back? We don't need to move?
Yes, Mayor Shontz, we'll bring them back if there's conversations that council wants to have with staff or you know, any information we can provide, please let us know.
Okay, so motion to confirm all actions and proceedings of council moved by Counselor Grant, seconded by Counselor Burgess. Counselor Burgess, all those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. That concludes the council portion of the meeting. We'll take a quick five-minute recess and be back to start committee. The whole chaired by Counselor Cado. I need a motion? No. Okay.
Good evening. We're now meeting as committee of the whole for items that require more debate and discussion. We're not going to be making any final decisions on these items, but proposing recommendations for the next council meeting. If anyone in the community has feedback on these recommendations, we encourage you to reach out to staff or submit your comments to council before a final decision is made at our next meeting. So item 6.1 on our agenda is Budget Priorities 2026. Before I turn it over to Mr. Lynn, I'm going to take this opportunity to sit up here on a soapbox and just say a couple of words related to the budget priorities, if council will indulge me. We're entering a year that feels more difficult, but that seems to be more of the rule, not the exception. You know, this round especially, there's a lot of economic uncertainty. Inflation is stubborn, serviced communities, and the legislative grounds continue to shift below us. Even so, this township continues to hold the lowest tax rate in the region while carrying the largest networks of roads and other infrastructure. And remember, only about 26 of every property dollar stays here in Woolwich. Every property tax dollar, sorry, stays here in Woolwich. That's the reality that frames every financial choice that we have to make here. This year will also be our first budget under the Strong Mayors Act. This province-wide change shifts the process, giving mayors direct authority to propose the municipal budget. In the past, our budgets were built by staff, shaped through committee, and debated line by line by council. Under the Strong Mayors Act, the starting point is now the mayor's proposal. Once the mayor presents it, council can amend it, but the mayor has veto power over those amendments. And it takes two-thirds majority to override that veto. This is more than a procedural tweak. This is fundamentally reshaping how we deliberate and how we ultimately balance the budget. So mayor, I believe that I do speak for the rest of council when I offer my thanks to you for extending this invitation for us to engage early in the process. This wasn't a requirement, and the choice to involve us at this stage matters. While the process is going to look different as we move ahead, tonight is about setting out the priorities and the principles that will guide the draft budget when it comes forward. So I will step down off my soapbox now and turn it over to you, Mr. Flynn. Lynn?
Thank you, and through you, Chair, to the rest of council. I'm just going to walk you through some slides of the budget priorities discussion. We're reframing the budget parameters discussion, because as you mentioned, it is more of a budget priorities. It is a strong mayor's budget. It's not necessarily a staff budget to give staff direction, but this is really to facilitate a ongoing discussion with staff providing you with some background financial information. Some of the slides we'll be going through is just the current financial pressures that we see, just again, from a staff perspective. We don't really talk too much about service levels, enhancements, reductions. Those are all the decisions of council and the strong mayor this year, but I will just go through some of these slides. There's a very detailed report attached to this council package, and just to try to highlight some of the items that are contained in this report. The first item here is this is just a quote that, that I like here. "The truth about a municipality's aspirations is not found in their strategic plan, it's found in their budget." And this is from the chief planner of the city of Vancouver. And it says, it's a line I heard many years ago that's really stuck with me, that it's really the budget that drives what the priorities and the things that are getting done to make sure that we have the funding to get those things done. So it's a very important document. I don't have to explain that to council, but it really does shape exactly what we're going to do and where we're going to focus our attention in the next year. Just to run council very quickly through the budget timelines, it is, because of the strong mayor's approach, it is an accelerated budget this year. So on top of everything else that we're doing, we're trying to get a lot of these numbers a lot quicker than we ever have in the past. So right now, we're at the September 9th budget priorities timeline. And we've talked with Mayor Shontz, and she wants regular touchpoints with councils, with council to involve the rest of council members in the budget decision-making, even though it is her role and her duty to propose the budget. So we're going to have a number of touchpoints. The first one after today will be October 7th, where we'll submit the board and committee budget, grant request, and then council will still have an opportunity to discuss and debate budgets in general. A very important timeline is November 4th, where Mayor Shontz has asked us to prepare kind of a draft budget. This is very much earlier than we normally would prepare that budget. But we want to make sure we have plenty of time for a lot of discussion and seeing where we're at. So we're going to be working very hard to present at least a touchpoint on capital and utility and operating budgets on the, the 4th of November. Clerk Smith can speak a little bit more to the actual timing and what's required as part of the strong mayors, but essentially, the, the public release of the mayor's budget will be January 6th with a much accelerated timeline, not having kind of that six-week timeline that we normally do, very condensed towards the end because of those strong mayor powers. And then hopefully having kind of final budget amendments around the end of January, which again is earlier than normal, which is why it's essential to have those earlier touchpoints. As Chair Cado mentioned, we are in an uncertain economic environment. The tariff threat is still present. We have an economic downturn, at least in the last quarter, so it is potentially on the horizon. We still have relatively high interest rates for debt that we're experiencing. That is hoping to bring down inflation, but there's still some uncertainty around that. We have seen a slowing of the housing market related to slowing immigration numbers. There's changing legislation that is happening all the time, most recently with Bill 17, which has reduced our cash flow purposes or availability. And then recent high tax increases, residents are feeling an affordability crunch, and it's not lost on us as well. So there is that reduced affordability and the, the residents' willingness to pay. Again, as Chair Cado mentioned, we do have the lowest residential tax comparison. I didn't have the most up-to-date current value assessments that we usually do this graph on, but I I didn't have the most up-to-date current value assessments that we usually do this graph on, but I did. I was able to update it still based on our current tax rates. So this is also taking into account our previous larger increases. We're still at the bottom for the average residential tax compared to our comparators in the region. Utility rates is important as well, because we're also going to be talking about that in a little bit more detail tonight. And I think it's very important to think of both of them together. You can see that our utility rates were not quite the same on the lower end. We're kind of more towards the upper end. And one thing you may notice too is our sewer costs are among the highest as well. So even the proportion of the water in sewer is more to the sewer side as well compared to some of our peers. So the reason that I think it's important, and again, this is just a rough estimate. If you look at both utilities and taxes together, we do have a higher proportion of utility rates, and this is just again, an average user. There are users with different usage levels and whether they pay water and sewer, but an average household using an average consumption amount, this is roughly, again, the comparison. So we're still at the bottom, even when you compare both utilities and taxes. But the the quantum is a little bit smaller when you look at the comparison. We're probably getting closer now to Cambridge when you factor in the utility rates as well. So we are going through a number of budget development challenges. One of my primary goals with council since I I came on board is really to be very honest, open, and transparent. Try to provide, as on our current financial health. But I've noticed also there are a number of challenges. So we have more of a decentralized approach to finance. Up until very recently, Caitlin Stroud is right beside me. She's our new senior financial analyst. She was hired at the beginning of June. But we didn't necessarily have this, this, these kind of resources to do more in-depth analysis. Now we do have additional resources, and you will find more better analysis as a result of these. But we've noticed that many of the budgets and models haven't changed in in many years, and they do need to all be reworked. And it will take quite a bit of time to kind of go through all of the models and just to validate a lot of the information we're doing. We don't have budget software. It is a very manual process to actually establish the budgets. They're all, they're all linked together in Excel documents that are very difficult to run scenarios and to do kind of detailed analysis. But again, that's something we're looking at changing with new financial software and hopefully getting new budget software. Council are well aware of our current reserve balances and deficits, which are creating a challenge. Again, just speaking, we never, we don't necessarily have a detailed analysis of where the money is going and exactly how much, where the priority areas are. We're getting a better idea as we go through every single week, but it just takes time to really have a good grasp of all of our budgets. In the past, I've seen that we've lowered a lot of our budget areas to meet a certain tax threshold, and that necessarily it's good for the taxes. But then sometimes we're overspending in certain areas which aren't necessarily budgeted in the best way. I'll talk a little bit later about allocations between tax and utility budgets. So there's allocations within our tax budget and also allocations between. I found that a number of costs that I would more associate related to the tax-supported side have actually been charged to the utility budgets. And this also explains partially how we have higher utility rates than some of our peers and then lower taxes, because some of those costs which may be tax-supported are actually being absorbed by our utility rates. But in order to correct that problem, it would be mean taking those costs out of the utility budgets and putting it into the tax budget. So there is a trade-off there. But it is important to understand kind of the true cost of something if we're looking to enhance and expand some of those systems. So we also have relatively short-term capital planning. We don't have a fully costed or funded 10-year capital plan, so that's again, something we're working on. So we're really taking a more of a short-term approach to capital. With the asset management plan, we're looking to kind of flesh that out a little bit better. And then also prioritizing. So once we have a longer-term vision, and this is council, where should we be focusing our very limited tax dollars and reserves? We can't be all things to all people, but we can prioritize, again, based on council's wishes. I think it's important to mention the public budget survey. So the the main feedback we had, we had over 400 responses. Concerns, I don't think it'll be a surprise to any councillor here about affordability and the recent high tax increases was a main theme, a main theme. The largest concern from our residents was the state of infrastructure and particularly with our roads. Forty-nine percent of residents said they they received poor value for their tax dollars, and only 47% rated the overall value of the services as fair or better. There was general concerns with staffing, administration, and inefficiency. Those are some of the comments that came out. And the highest priority service area increases, they identified road and road maintenance, winter control, and then recreation program. So that was the, the more details can be found in the budget report, but those were the high-level themes that came out of those budget survey responses. Let's take a quick second again to mention our current financial history. So there's been a number of years where we posted deficits. In 2023, I showed this to council a couple of weeks ago. We had a $200,000 surplus, but if you back out the investment income, which is kind of more temporary in nature, we were running a deficit in actual operating structural deficit. So we've run three, three deficits each year. And as the Q2 report recently showed, we're also projecting a deficit for 2025. So that's another challenge that we're trying to address with this. Utility financial performance, I don't need to go into too much detail. There'll be a report later on our water and wastewater system, but there's been quite a number of years of historic deficits, especially in the recent years. And we're still projecting a deficit for 2025, but we're hoping it is improving, and we'll turn that corner in 2026. This slide here shows what we were referring to a little bit before. So the orange bar is our capital budget, the green bar is our capital spend. So historically, we haven't been spending our full capital allocation. There's usually a lot of carryover in certain years, and a lot of the projects may not be deferred or may not get done or get done to the extent that we had initially proposed in the budget. To Councillor Schwint's point, the gray bar represents the growing uncapitalized TCA or construction in progress, the IP. So essentially, in starting in 2020, we start seeing a growth in the the uncapitalized tangible capital assets, and it's grown each year roughly by the amount of the spent capital items in 2022, 2023. In 2024, if you include the assumed assets, it was 47 million, but we're also estimating another 30-ish million of assumed assets. So we're, we're over 60, 60 million in TCAs. And there could be an additional assumed assets. And when I say assumed assets, that's assets that the developer are building. Councillor Cadot mentioned the stormwater ponds, so things like that, we eventually need to take over. So they don't show up in our financial statements as construction in progress until we assume those. And we have quite a number of developers building quite a number of assets. So those numbers are going to grow substantially in future years. I've shown this graph before as well. So our reserve balances have declined over the last few years. We're estimating, again, hopefully turning a corner in 2025. That number is higher right now, we're projecting in 2025, but it's still low by historical standards and also low by many of our, many of our peers. Also to note that that restricted reserve, that also includes half-funding and potential half-funding money coming in this year. Again, it won't be a surprise to anyone that we have very ambitious growth plans. So the state of our current infrastructure is very important, but also we have extremely high-growth needs, and those will carry very high-growth costs. I don't want to go into detail with this, but just to know that the the green column is our DC revenue. So that's the estimated DC revenue that we'll earn over the next 10 years, essentially. And with all the legislative changes, we know we won't collect that 87 million. We know it's going to be a much lower amount. And also, the timing of that cash flow is going to be pushed out later and later. So this also means that a lot of the infrastructure that we need will either have to be front-ended by developers, will have to be issuing debt, and it's going to be more and more difficult to actually repay any of that debt because of the uncertainty around the building and the development that is upcoming. And then if any potential changes in DC legislation over the next 10 years will potentially reduce that number even further. So having said that, staff feel that there's kind of three main buckets where council are really going to have to wrestle about some of these trade-offs. The first one is, should we be focusing on servicing growth? Council know there's a lot of growth potential in Breslaw right now. There's a lot of water and wastewater servicing, potential eastside land servicing and employment lands there. But those are also, as I mentioned, they're going to eat up a lot of our debt and our cash flow related to that infrastructure. Bill 17 has worsened, that cash flow is even going to be more difficult, and our new development analyst will hopefully help understand exactly what some of those cash flow needs. Again, there's going to be additional costs for assuming all of these developer assets, even if we're not contributing it to it. We're still going to have to cover the repair costs, maintenance costs, and all the impacts of capital. And the actual growth needs that we have will probably exceed our debt capacity. So we have debt capacity limits set by the province, and to do everything that we probably need to do would exceed the amount of debt that we could possibly issue. The other kind of key area to focus on, and that's the growth side of things, is should we focus on our existing infrastructure? There was a lot of feedback in the survey about our current condition of our roads. And the asset management plan looks at an 8.8% increase for existing infrastructure. So even some of the other scenarios that we show has a much lower amount, which will probably need to be made up in future years. So if we don't fund it this year, the asset management plan showed that in future years, we would have to catch up. Again, debt is an option to front-end some of those costs until we have adequate reserves, but we have limited debt capacity. So if we've committed too much debt capacity to fund our growth needs, there'll be less debt capacity available to fund our existing infrastructure needs. And the last kind of key bucket, I would say, is the focus on community building. We know that our residents want new and enhanced services. They're asking for more, more services. So do we enhance some of our existing services? There's the Breslaw Community Center is another high priority area. We have a lot of, you heard a delegate talk tonight about our climate action goals. So those are other areas to focus on, community building. St. Jacob's Arena, for example, needs very much needed repairs and upgrades. We have staff accommodation needs here in our building. And then we also have, we also have new buildings, like a new fire hall, potentially a new operations center, additions to the administration building. Those are going to be pressures over the next coming years, which are all going to be competing for these either growth or infrastructure renewal dollars. So essentially, this is council's decision of, we have a limited reserve capacity, limited debt capacity, limited appetite for tax increase. Where should we be focusing kind of our attention? And when we're developing the budget, if we need to make trade-offs against some of these, where we should be be making some of those trade-offs? And these are again, very high buckets, but if council also have other very specific priorities, also welcome some of that discussion. And so just to show you kind of how we built the tables in your report, I won't go through every line on every table in here, but the base budget is essentially what we're delivering right now exactly. We took our 2025 budget, and we assumed just very generic inflationary increases. So salaries, we have, we do have actual costs. So we can project out, okay, someone's at a certain step, what's their step next year? What's the COLA increase? So we can actually do that calculation. So that was for salaries, wages, and benefits. We also have benefit numbers coming from our provider. Insurance is just a real estimate, but insurance tends to go up higher than inflation. So we found that over the last few years, so we used a higher inflationary factor. Utilities, again, it's a smaller amount because there was a savings because of the the carbon rebate was not, is no longer in our hydro costs or natural gas costs. So there's a savings there, but usually there is an increase in utility costs. So it's a more of a flat line. And then things like grant funding, fees and charges, we assumed a 2% to 3% increase. Equipment costs, purchased goods and purchased services, again, a 2% to 3% inflationary increase. No new expansions or anything. Again, this is more, just more inflationary. And so that's the base impact. Then we also have the Breslaw drain. So anytime we issue debt, it needs to go then into our operating budget in the following year to pay the debt costs. So last year, we issued just over $2 million in debt. So the first payment will be due in 2026 for the Breslaw drain, and that'll be 152,000, so roughly a 1% increase. And then assessment growth is kind of takes off that. So when we get new developments built, they generate new taxes. So it's kind of a negative impact on that. So we're estimating, again, don't know the exact number, but roughly 450,000 in additional assessment dollars, which will offset some of those savings. But as the township grows, we usually need to expand services to meet those growth. But this doesn't assume that growth in assessment, it's just an inflationary increase. So we developed a number of scenarios. And just to be very clear, these are illustrative scenarios. These are not final budget numbers. They're just to facilitate the discussion with council. These are staff's high-level main impacts, but there's many other items that haven't been fully considered here that council will want to debate and discuss. But the tier-one scenario is listed here, and I'll go through in a little bit more detail in the tier-two scenario. But right now, we're estimating for just some small staffing increases, basically 25% of that asset management plan, the infrastructure levy increase, 2.2%. Future debt costs, so if we're very similar to previous years issuing debt, we don't know what our debt number is going to be, but if it's similar to last year, 2 million this year, it'll be another 150,000 next year. We know we're going to need still to increase our equipment reserve contribution, this is a very small amount. Where we know we're over budget, and we historically have been in winter control. So we know we have to increase our winter control budget to avoid kind of a deficit in future years. And the growth exemption reserve is a very kind of complex topic, and I can go into more detail, it's in the report. But essentially, we provide discretionary exemptions to a number of expansions. We're not required to provide those expansion or exemptions. But if we do provide those exemptions, we're required to fund them in our DCs, because if we don't fund them, then we won't have enough funding in our DCs to pay for them. Again, just to be very clear, these are not the statutory exemptions that were required to reduce. These are voluntary exemptions that council has decided to provide for certain types of development, so they don't pay DCs. So again, tier-two, tier-one scenario, I just went through everything. So this doesn't increase service level expansions. It doesn't address like some existing cost problems that I mentioned, like the utility allocations. And it doesn't make any increases to our operating contingency reserves or any increases there. It just covers the items that I that I went through. A more kind of ambitious scenario is the tier-two scenario, which has a little bit more in every area. So increased staffing costs, a number of positions. Again, we don't know the positions, just estimating here. Around 50% of that asset management plan, infrastructure levy recommendation, it was 8.8%. This has 4.4. Asset management for assumed assets, I'll just mention that because I mentioned assumed assets. Our existing asset management plan didn't take into account assumed assets, but we know those assumed assets are also going to need to be taken over, and there needs to be funding put aside to replace those assets. So this begins to a small amount to put towards those future assets as well. Again, this could be blended with that infrastructure levy. I'm showing it here just to, for discussion and debate. If council did want to accelerate some of the projects and issue more debt, then we would potentially have an impact in future years for repayment of debt costs. This number can change up, down. It could go to zero if there's no debt. Again, it's just here for a placeholder. Tax allocation adjustments, so we're looking at cost allocations. Try to make sure that we're not running deficits in future years. Tax allocation adjustments. So we're looking at cost allocations. Try to make sure that we're not running deficits in future years. So one of the things we're looking at is our allocation methodology. We'll probably need at least 150,000 to kind of to right size some of those cost allocations. And we're looking into that in a little bit more detail. The other item is the utility allocation. So we know we're overcharging our utility budgets for a lot of the tax supported costs. But in order to move those costs out of the utility budgets to the tax budget, it's going to cost more money. It's a more accurate budgeting approach, but it will have an impact. It would lower the rates, but increase the taxes for that. Right now we have our capital project supervisors. They're not currently budgeted in our operating budget at all. So this suggests that we're going to apply 25% of their time into our operating budget. Right now we just have them in the capital budgets. You don't see them in your operating budget. But we're suggesting that at least for this year, we would still put them in the operating budget with a recovery from capital. So at least you could see them there. It would be up to council to tweak that if you want to charge some of that to the operating budget or keep it as 100% capital cost recovery. Again, winter control, there's a budget increase for, and it's a very substantial budget increase, just reflective of the current deficit we're, we're expecting this year. It's a more kind of cushion number. This number could be lower. Another number here is we could start contributing to a winter control reserve. Again, these numbers could be interchanged, added or reduced. We're putting in, this is probably nowhere near sufficient, but again, it's a placeholder to start the discussion. There's a much higher number that could potentially be in here to enhance our roads and our roads equipment. But it's not, we just put 250,000, roughly a 1.5% increase. The next item is employee future benefit liability. You heard the auditor talk about our sick leave. The primary concern really is the sick leave. So retiree benefits, it's a much larger number and it's because this is the 10 year or eight year, or depending on when someone retires cost that we're obligated to pay for the next number of years until they turn 65. So that's why it's such a much higher number in our financial statements. But we do include those benefit premiums in our operating budget for the year. But if we stopped, then that would be the liability amount, but that's how much right now that we would have to make sure we keep in our operating budget in future budget years. Sick leave is a little bit more of a concern mainly because we don't necessarily have a budget for it and we don't necessarily have a reserve for it. And just to expand on councillor Brian's question to the auditor, that roughly 250, 270,000 dollar amount in our financial statements, that is, and I'll try to explain this in simpler terms. That is the actuarial estimate of our sick leave liability. So that means the actuaries take a probability. They say, what are the, what's your historic usage? What do we think that most people are going to use? And it's only for staff over 18 days and they say roughly, based on your usage and based on their banks in any given year or the amount that you will probably end up paying out is around 270,000. And that's what that number represents in the financial statements. It could be a lot higher than that. If a lot more people go on sick, it could be lower, but that's the estimated amount. And this is where best practice would be to, this is I think 50% of that, that if you did have significant sick leave, you could put that money into a reserve. This does not represent the full sick leave liability. If everyone took all of their sick days, this is just more like what's the most likely? That number would be much, much higher than 270,000. It would be, I think it's over 2 million. But then it's reduced to 270,000 based on probability estimates. We would never do that. That would be if everyone essentially could go on sick, went on sick essentially. But we do not pay out, just to be clear as well, we do not pay out sick leave benefits. And this is why it's really just incurred during the year. I, I think you have a question councillor Brian.
Thank you. I do. Do we know how many sick days are currently sitting in the bank that people have accumulated but have not used? I'm just looking at a future liability. How many days are actually sitting there? I mean, some people could have, depending on like the service, a year's worth of sick leave, and that's what I'm finding very concerning.
So actually Caitlin has done some analysis. We'll share that with council future because it was a council direction to look at sick leave, but it is again, that higher, much higher number. I don't know the exact number of days, but that's why it's that much higher number. But we know most of our employees don't use the maximum amount of sick leave and that's why it's a much lower amount in the financial statements. Not everyone's going to use the full allocation, but it is a higher number. I mean, that's the upset limit. This is why the actuarial estimate is very important because they're using their estimates and methods to say this is most likely to happen. Again, the tier, I went through everything the tier two scenario includes. Just to be clear, this isn't the full need, like this only funds roughly 50% of our asset management requirements. This has very limited debt included in there. I think I had 300,000, which represents roughly four to five million dollars of debt. So to do much higher debt levels would be much more expensive. We're still having very low reserve balances and there's still debate about like how feasible some of those major facilities would be because those would require substantial amounts of debt and finances and have those trade offs against our current capital projects. So this year we're trying very much to improve budget communication, both internally and with our residents. So we're creating a SharePoint site internally for more internal collaboration. We're going to revamp our external budget site. So we're looking at dedicated staff and having much more graphical information on our budget site. Providing more infographics about where our money goes. That's been a question from a lot of our residents and just itemizing exactly where each tax dollar goes for the different services. The budget document itself, I feel like is a very important document. So we're going to have a much more polished and graphical approach instead of just the 200 pages of spreadsheets, hopefully have a lot more context and commentary related to this. We're also exploring putting a pamphlet inside residents' tax bills so they can see kind of where the budget dollars are going, showing that regional and and township breakdown and just providing more information to the residents. And we're also exploring with Caitlin's help and our other staff, some power intelligence tools to visualize a lot of that data and to make it more kind of interactive and more user friendly. So I know that was a lot of information, but I think it's really useful information to facilitate. Again, this is your discussion. This is not a staff discussion. We're presenting some of the information and some of the pressures. Again, the tier lists are just illustrations. They're not final tax dollars. The mayor proposes the final budget, council makes the amendments. These are just areas that we wanted to bring to council's attention for awareness. Service levels, anything else is up to council. It doesn't include any reductions or efficiencies. That's not our role at this point. So there is other reductions, efficiencies we'll find throughout the budget process that'll hopefully offset a lot of these numbers. This is just really net new that we're looking at. But what we really need to know is kind of what are our priorities? Do you see any trade offs between growth, renewal and service enhancements? Importantly, for at least the finance staff, is there more analysis that you'd like or you'd like to see based on some of the things we showed you? There's that trade off between tax and utility costs. If we put more money towards the utility area, we're going to increase the costs and potentially the deficits there. If we move money back where it probably should be, we're going to increase taxes. Do we want to do that this year? Do we want to phase that in? Do we want to leave it status quo? I personally think that's really important to know if you want to invest more in say a roads program, that if we're allocating more of those costs into water and wastewater, that you need to know the true costs of actually maintaining a road. So that's where I would kind of land. But again, that would be an impact. Short term versus long term capital needs. Council will know what the appetite is for tax increases. And then what are you expecting from those new investments? So council will have very clear kind of areas and what are you expecting and how can we report back on those new investments? Or provide more analysis for some of those investments. So that was my presentation. So maybe I'll, I'll just stop to see if there's any questions for me, but really this should be a facilitated budget.
Anyone want to get us started? Councillor Brian?
Thank you. I've just got a comment to start us relating to development. I think we have to look forward as to how we're funding our development. We've got developers coming in. They'll give us a park, but none of the assets that go in that park land. So we're on the hook for providing all the playground equipment and installing it, for one example. We need arenas and whatnot. So we need to be looking for private public partnerships, naming rights, whatever we have to do to raise some funds so that it's not all on the backs of the taxpayers. Growth and these developers need to start funding some of the things that are required by the communities when they're putting these communities in. And I think it's only fair that they start contributing more to a community than expecting the taxpayers to fund everything. That's just my two cents.
Thanks for that comment. And I mean, I'll reiterate my comment about the stormwater drains. That is something that is really starting to concern me with the level of stormwater drains we're installing across the community that is ultimately assumed by the township. A million dollars to clean one of those out and with over 20, 20 year cycle, it's a million dollars a year. So point well taken. Who wants to go next? Should I just go around? Yeah, let's do that. Councillor Burgess.
Thanks for you, Chair. Yeah, to sum up kind of my thoughts and I think the public's too, to general senses, the two key issues I would see is affordability right now as the director pointed out. Costs have been going up year over year. It's hard to afford life basically and everyone's kind of taking another dollar from you from every different direction. So we got to focus on that. And then the other priority is roads. Been in the paper. We were rated as some of the worst roads in Ontario. Our gravel roads have been in a bit of, so I think we got to really focus on that. So talking about extra analysis we need, I would like to kind of know like what money is going towards roads? What's being done for long term capital? What's kind of the cost of if we pave a road now versus a long term cost of keeping the gravel and maintaining it? So better analysis on the cost of transferring stuff now or keeping it the way it is. And then depending on those analysis, we can kind of determine how much we want to put into our infrastructure budget to kind of improve our roads, whether it's better going now or keeping gravel.
Thanks councillor Burgess. It's going to be hard to disagree with, with that one. I mean, if we look back to Director Lynn's buckets, I think that was bucket number two and that's firmly, you know, I would agree 100% with you. That's firmly where I would want our attention put as well. Just throwing that out there, even though I am Chair. Any other thoughts? We're, we're going to go with you, Mayor. We're going around the circle. So go ahead.
Thank you. I, I had two pages of notes to just introduce this all, but most of it's been said already. So thank you for the introduction that you did. I thought that was, that was very good. But what, what I just want to say, and I think you all know this, but I'll say it here in public, that what I'm hoping to accomplish first and foremost is that council will be part of the struggle that takes place in staff meetings each year. Right from the get go, rather than staff wrestling this down and then comes back to us and then we go through the same wrestling process. So if we can try to do that together and work together, I think we'll have a better end product. And you know, we, we may have to take our, our blood pressure meds, but I, I think we'll be. I, I also wanted to say that often organizations are conservative, conservative in their approach to budgeting and we've all been part of organizations. And what I mean by that is there's places where there's different budget lines and, and they all get expanded a little bit more. And what, what I have seen is that past councils have been very diligent in directing staff to eliminate those types of cushions. And that's allowed us to keep our taxes low. And I've seen comments that our taxes continue to increase at percentages that are higher than inflation, but I remind you that our tax rate has been the lowest in the region and that's already been presented. So I, I'm, I'm going to give you a little illustration and I know the media really dislikes using the coffee analogy, so I'm going to use it. But I'm going to use it in a little different way. So I'm selling you a cup of coffee for a dollar. David's selling you a cup of coffee for $2. David increases his price by 5% to $2.10. I increase mine by 10% to a $1.10. We've both increased the costs by 10%. But whose coffee are you going to buy? So am I doing a disservice by increasing my costs by 10%? Or should I increase mine by 20% to $1.20? I'm still considerably lower than David. But my increase is 20%. And that's the struggle that I'm going through and that I've gone through every year is where is that balance that we can't throw a 20% increase at, at our residents or we'll have a, you know, mass people in the council chambers. But, but I do think that we have to really look at, at where we are and, and where we're going and how we can make that balance in a good way. What else did I want to say? I talked about roads. You guys all talk about roads and playgrounds. Most of the rest of what I had in here has been addressed in, in some way or other. I would also add that about 13 years ago, and I think you've all heard this, a study indicated that we would need about a four and a half percent increase annually to our infrastructure program in order to set us up well in terms of being in a good place. And we've not maintained that kind of increase for the very same reason that we're going to struggle this budget as well. And so that's, that's part of why we are where we are. So what I hope that, that we'll get at the end of, of our discussion today is a little bit of a more direction for staff as to, you know, which buckets are the most important. And Colin's done a really good job of, of giving us a starting point and giving us some possibilities for moving ahead. So if there are things in those lines that you say, this is really important. We need to keep this and we need to focus on that, even if it's not maybe quite the right amount. Those are the kind of things I hope we can get through tonight.
Thanks for that. Should I continue to go in order? Okay, councillor Grant.
Thank you. Through you. So I, I, I share a lot of Mayor Shance's feelings when it comes to the budget. I feel that our reserve funds are in the state they are today because we've been robbing Peter to pay Paul, which is to keep our, our tax rate at an artificially low rate. And now I have residents asking, well, what happened to our reserves? Well, the reality is we've let them dry to keep taxes low. So for me, heading into this budget season, my priorities are looking at trying to bolster those reserves so that we do have a cushion for ourselves in the future. You know, we know that the, we weren't able to anticipate the cost of fire trucks increasing as much as they did post COVID. We went from something from costing $4,000 to 1.5 million. That completely depletes reserves. So we need to take into account that there will be increased costs for items in the future. So I, for me, my priority is seeing those reserve funds be bolstered. From a service level perspective, I would like to prioritize roads. I think there is a gap for residents. They see their tax rate and then they don't see it reflected in the roads they drive. So we need to we need to illustrate essentially where their tax dollars are going and that is in the roads they drive and making sure that they're clear and in good repair. So I, I share councillor Burgess and councillor Kado's feelings that roads needs to be a priority for us. We know that kind of the gravel replacement program is, is good investment. So I'd like to see that bolstered as well. And then the other area is the water and wastewater deficits and trying to get a good grapple of that. And again, that's feeding into that reserve question of building a good cushion there.
Thanks councillor Grant. And I'm going to conclude here with, well, not conclude, I'm going to turn it over, I'll say to councillor Schwint for his thoughts.
Thanks. We've all got different ideas on what's important and all those things are important. And the numbers don't math very well for me. So going forward, I think a priority for me is our residents expect excellence from us as a township. And I think we're trying to do a whole lot of things. And I think we're trying to do a whole lot of things, but we haven't done anything really, really well recently. So that means doing a better job at our core functions, better roads, better customer service, get our numbers right, better reporting to the community. If we do our core jobs well, then we can build on new things going forward. And the other big thing for me this year will be how do we manage growth? The growth pilot dwarfs our operational budget. At what speed do we have to grow this township? At what speed can we afford to grow the township? And at what speed does the residents want us to grow? We have to manage those three very diverse speeds and come up with something that will work long-term.
If I can chime in on that growth conversation, what really concerns me is our capacity to handle growth, especially on the east side. You know, Director Lynn showed in his PowerPoint, if growth needs, growth needs are going to exceed our capacity, our debt capacity. So I mean, if our growth needs are going to exceed our debt capacity, what happens when we run out of money? And I think that I've asked that question before, but does development stop? Does the town declare bankruptcy? Like, that's, that's not good things to think about. But these are the questions that we really, this is where we're at, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So, can you speak to that at all? Not, not a hard one or anything?
Through you, Chair Kado. You are right, like our, our growth targets are very ambitious. I mean, we're a population of 30,000 people, growing to 65, 68,000. That's over double our size. It's very difficult just to maintain our existing population, as you've seen with our reserves and our deficits, and that'll just add additional pressure. And with all the legislative changes, a number of uncertainty, the last thing I would want to do is issue tens of millions of dollars of debt with having all of that uncertainty and knowing, without knowing for sure that we can repay it. Obviously, we wouldn't issue that debt without having a very firm repayment plan, but that's going to take a lot of financial calculations to really understand what can we actually afford and then translate that into kind of the servicing strategy. Also realizing that they're going to generate tax revenue, development charges, but also the province could just change the funding model on a dime, especially related to development charges. Probably the thing that keeps me up the most, if they just cut our development charges by 50%, well, all that debt we potentially issued, our, our ability to repay that just changes completely. Now we're maybe using infrastructure reserve money to pay back DC-related debt, which changes the whole conversation as well.
Mr. Brennaman?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, just in on this conversation. I think the other thing we have to remember that council has talked about is the reality to ensure that we are funding growth is why we need to continue to do advocacy with senior levels of government, both at the provincial and the federal level. So to Colin's point, if the reality is, you know, the province wants to see growth in housing, in economic development, in employment lands, but they're not providing the wherewithal through the normal channels of development charges because they're looking for those to be cut in half or eliminated or reduced. What is the alternative? Are they prepared to provide appropriate funding to ensure that they're covering a significant portion of, of the cost of growth? As this council knows, this is one of the primary reasons our key point of advocacy as a township outside the normal joint township delegations at AMO was to say to the province that we have significant needs with respect to the east side's lands and Reslaw. They don't just involve future housing. The first couple of phases involve some pretty significant realities in terms of economic development, in terms of airport expansions and employment land developed in around there from an aviation, aerospace industry side of things. So, that's just the other part that we have to remember is that we have to continue, and we are, to actively advocate for support from senior levels of government. Because, as council is well aware, we have only certain realities in terms of what our capacity is to do things ourselves.
Thanks, Mr. Brennaman. Well, council, where do we go from here? Do we want to break down bucket by bucket or? Go ahead, David. Sorry, Mr. Brennaman.
Yeah, sorry. I mean, one of the things I just wanted to reinforce, you know, that, that Colin has done, and I'm sure, you know, you've seen this tonight, is trying to look at things from a, an options standpoint, right? And, and I think you do have the guiding lists in front of you with respect to the tiers to be able to, again, to the mayor's point, talk about, you know, is this something you want us to focus in on? Is this something you say, yeah, that would be nice to do, but, you know, let's not do it right now? Again, that would help immensely, especially since, as Colin noted, we are on an expedited process to get a draft in front of you in November, which is unprecedented. And again, that will not be the final final. That is just a gang to have the appropriate touchpoints so that hopefully January is not a difficult time and a mess of, you know, lots of amendments and managing a, a very difficult process. And to your earlier point, Chair, you know, I think, you know, Mayor has made it clear that's why she's looking for appropriate touchpoints so that January can be as efficient and effective as possible. But I wanted to reinforce that, you know, I applaud, you know, the work that finance has done to be able to show you the, the tiered options. And, you know, the, the last tier in particular has a lot of the, you know, a lot of the more comprehensive list of menu of options, if you will, of things, you know, that council can either say yes or nay to with respect to providing direction. So, just wanted to reinforce that that was the game plan in terms of how finance structured things to, to hopefully help structure your discussions. You may have your own things that you want to say, hey, I don't see this on the list. We recognize that as well and we're happy to add that too. But, you know, to help facilitate your discussions tonight, that's why the, the tiered spreadsheet was created.
So can I make a suggestion that we bring up tier two again so that for the benefit of council, we can all see it? Councillor Grant?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good suggestion, Councillor Kado. I was just going to say that maybe to kick us off, I, we all kind of identified roads as an area of priority, which I think brings us to a priority of renewal. So I think the discussion can be, if roads is a priority, what other type of renewal projects are we looking towards funding? Like, if we're looking to do, you know, St. Jacob's Arena renewal, is that a priority? Or would we rather see those funds go somewhere like to winter control or to roads only? So I think we may need to grapple with, when it comes to renewal, if that is an area of priority, what emphasis do we put in that area?
Yeah, I would say that's fair. Do you have any thoughts? Do you want to get us started on maybe what you would consider?
I, I think I've already kind of hinted at that renewal projects, like, you know, we, maybe we're not replacing a playground, maybe we're not putting in new boards at an arena, that that is less of a priority than when it comes to, we want to spend our renewal dollars.
Thanks for the clarification. I'm trying my best to not give my opinion here. It's really hard to do. I don't know how you do it so often. Any other comments, Councillor Schwint?
A little bit nervous on this approach in that we can play around with tier two, thinking that's our upper limit. We'll try and find some savings and reallocations. We're moving a couple hundred thousand dollars here or there. And that'll get us a budget this year. And then in 2026 and 2027, a new council is going to come in, face, have the same problem that the previous councils have left us. We haven't fixed our structural deficit, I'm going to call it, or lack of resources. So I think my challenge would be, what can we say in this budget, just say no to? We're not doing things this way anymore. We're making a fundamental change. I know I had a veterinarian tell me once, just how about, no, we're not having this disease. It's got to go. And the example I'll use is, this won't win me any bounty points at all in Westman Shores, I'm sorry, but so be it. $12 million to refurbish the Westman Shores Bridge. Doesn't pass the smell test for me. Couldn't we have gotten that done for $2 million if we'd found a different way of building that bridge?
That's regional.
I know it's regional. It was easier for me to pick that way than identify a department here. I can pick on different departments here too. I don't quite want to do that yet. Fundamentally, how do we change the way we procure goods and services? Because I'll guarantee you that governments are high-cost procurement people. But how can we fundamentally do things differently? Do we need to hire an engineer for Jared that can stamp bridge designs and cut our bridges in half? Is that an option? Like, we have got to think outside the box. Can we make fire trucks last longer than the 20 years recommended? We had that discussion last year, which sent us on a tough spot. But what else can we do to fundamentally change our budget? Because a hundred thousand dollars here or there is not going to set the next council up or rate pairs up success.
Councillor Bryant?
Thank you. I think we need to prioritize needs over want. Look at what the community wants to see or needs to have in place versus what somebody wants to have. Like, it's nice to have, say, a new skating rink, but do we need it? Whereas we need roads repaired because everybody uses it. So I think we really have to think that through. What's a necessity versus what's a, a nice thing to have?
Mayor Shance?
So if I can push you a little further on that, you said roads are a necessity. Some other things are not. Like, I, I don't disagree with you, but what would you put in those two categories?
That's a tough one to prioritize, to be very honest. I haven't given it a lot of thought at this point, but.
That's the work we need to do here.
Exactly. I agree. I, I think if you look at, say, I know recreation is important to people, but what, what is a necessity? That's the only way I can put it right now without sitting down and really giving it a lot of thought, which I haven't done at this point. But we really have to start thinking as to what is necessary for people's quality of life versus what, what are the frills? What can we do without versus what do we need to have in place?
Councillor Burgess?
Through you, Chair. Yeah, we've received a few feedback from residents, so just going to quote one active smart resident here who said, we should, one of the methods to improve our budgeting should be implement zero-based budgeting to justify every expense annually. So I guess if I can just talk to the Director Lynn for a second, just say like, right now, we're just very high-level. It's 2% increase, 3% increase. And then whether council has an appetite to dig into that more is one question. But for you guys specifically and all the directors, how much do you guys dig into finding efficiencies? Or, as kind of been talked about here, is there a different way we can pro stuff, process stuff, or do it to kind of get that down?
Through you, Chair Kado. That's a, it's a big question, to be honest. And to be honest, we don't really look at efficiencies as far as like a finance department. Like, really, we're looking more at the actual dollar amounts that are in the budget. And this, I think, to Councillor Schwint's point, is really important to get back to those kind of fundamentals. Like, what does it actually cost to deliver our current level of service in winter control, for example? Right now, what's in our budget isn't what it costs to deliver the, the winter control service. And I could probably, and we're starting to do this, is to start analyzing what are we spending our money on? And what are we not spending our money on? We're not looking at efficiencies or service delivery or like the, like how much value we're getting out of that. It's really more of just making sure that our budgets are accurate. And this is even where we started identifying, say, the water and utility versus the tax-supported side. Like, we, we put a greater equipment cost to the water and sewer budget. That's to grade a gravel road, for example. And that was maybe done to keep taxes low. But the greater isn't a water and sewer cost, it's a road cost. So I'm not sure that even the cost to maintain our gravel roads is accurately reflected in our budget. So that would be my first thing, is just to make sure that we have accurate costs and then try to understand that efficiency would be the next kind of step on it.
Yeah, just a follow-up through you, Chair. I appreciate you commenting to that on the finance side, but I guess I'm even pushing the directors more on each department. For example, last budget, we really pushed on water and wastewater and INI. And now we're getting the results where, we'll hear shortly on our next item here, we're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars. So is there other areas that you see or directors see or that council should look into where we can dig in on a certain issue to see what have we been missing? Like, what are we not following up on? What areas have just been, staff have changed over or whatever it may be that we've just lost track of?
Maybe perhaps even if there's any areas we as a council can spend in order to save, you know, to really compound the savings. So thanks for that comment. If I may, Councillor Grant, I wanted to go back to something you had said, and it was about the infrastructure and, you know, whether or not we want renewal to be focused on roads, we want to focus it on roads and arenas. From my perspective, the roads really should take precedence. Everything else, St. Jacob's, yes, it does need an overhaul, but we really should rely on funding partners for something like that, whether it be the province or what have you. I would be much more willing to move forward with an aggressive program on our roads renewals than I would arena renewals. And I don't know if that helps anybody. Councillor Grant?
I was just kind of on that too. I think it's important for residents to know that there is a fundamental misalignment here in their own priorities. Roads is ranked very high as a priority, but so is recreation. And the reality is, we can have one and maybe not the other. If we want both, it's going to cost us more. They prioritize kind of customer service. Well, that comes with additional staff cost. So there, from the township's perspective, we maybe need to have a, do a better job of communicating those realities that, you know, we want to prioritize roads and recreation is very important. Offering of services like recreation and health and culture and wellness are very important for residents. But it's, as Councillor Bryant said, it's a nice to have, it's not a necessity. And in a tough budget year, things like that are going to have to get cut. So whether that's like, I hate to say it, but like reduction in grant funding for certain events or certain kind of outreach programs within the community, maybe an area that we have to trim back this year because of the fiscal reality that we're all grappling with. Knowing that cutting those services will negatively impact some of our more vulnerable residents who don't have access to regular services or the funds to access those services. So, it, it does put us in a precarious situation where we're, we're balancing wants versus needs. But I think we also need to just be cognizant when we're talking to residents and when the township is talking to residents, that this is the reality that if we want to lower our tax rate, that means that things like recreational programs, swimming, sports teams, those are going to be farther and fewer between. And we, we don't want to lose them, but that's just the reality that we want to have good roads. Like, we can't have both. So, yeah.
Thanks. We'll go to Councillor Burgess and Mayor Shance and Councillor Bryant.
Through you, Chair. Just wondering if Director Lynn could answer the last question I proposed. Now I'm putting them on the spot. And just even, again, maybe when they come back in October, that the directors could ponder an idea, I don't know if this is asking too much, of an area they could look at that there could be some savings. Or if we challenge every department to try and find 1% to take a deeper dive into their budgets and see if they can find 1% of savings or something along those lines. But yeah, we can find some solutions there.
Through Chair Kado to Councillor Burgess. I think that's a, it's a great idea. The accelerated timeline is going to put more pressure on us to just get the budget together. One thing I will say that we have had, at least in the last year or so, a, a, a more analytical focus, definitely from the finance department. Now with additional staff, we have a new development person starting. We now have the capacity to do that more analytical analysis, essentially, and which we probably didn't have the capacity or the expertise to really do that in the past. So there is definitely opportunity to do that. We'll try, as we're going through and building the budgets, anything we can identify right away, we'll bring. We'll try, as we're going through and building the budgets, anything we can identify right away, we'll bring to the attention. I'll let any director speak to their own, um, service area, but. Some of this, to be honest with council, will take a while to really get to the root of, some of it hasn't been looked at in ten or twenty years. And it'll take a long time to do that deeper dive analysis, not that we're not going to do it, it's just we're going to have to, we can't. Spread ourselves too thin, we'll have to maybe focus on one area at a time to, to get to the deeper. Uh, analysis that you're asking for, but it's definitely exactly where we want to go. In finance.
Thank you. Um, so what I've heard here tonight is the same thing I've read in the comments from. Residents and what I've heard from, from council before is that roads are, are very important. And, and I, I don't have a full appreciation for what that means. But in my mind, I'm thinking if for it, and this is why I think it would be nice to have a three-year budget. If, if we could focus on roads for next year and maybe then, um, average it out a little more in the following year. Or focus on roads next year and focus on. Recreation the next year. I, I don't have a clear picture of whether that's doable or makes any sense on a practical level, but that. That's sort of where my mind is going with some of this. And, and I guess there, there's, um, the one other piece is debt. In terms of, of roads, so I've heard, we've heard from Jared, for example, that this is a good time to be going out for tenders. So does that make this a good time to really focus on the roads? And maybe take some long-term debt, maybe a, a short, long-term debt. Um, to, to take advantage of good prices now that may not be here in one or two years. Those are some of the things that are rolling around my mind.
Thank you. Another thought I had too was the user fees, we may have to take a look at those and adjust them accordingly for the people that are using it and can afford the fees. I think the time has come to really take a serious look at how we're charging for some of our services. And potentially having to cut some of those services as well.
Yeah, I recall our last budget meeting, talking about like minor hockey, for instance, and how the, uh, the rate in which we subsidize them is different than other minor sports. So at least having some consistency would be nice. Uh, Councillor Schwint, you had a point?
Yep, I'll just go back to savings and how things have changed. And the planning side of things with the region not being a planning authority anymore. Have we had conversations, Ms. Freeze, with the region, they're not doing their job anymore, we're taking it on? Are they gonna send some funding your way to help with that? Are they gonna be saving some money because they don't have to do that, Mayor Shans? Um, how do we? If it's fundamental downshifting of responsibility to the township. How are we having that funding from the upper tier come down to us?
Right? No, I, 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 I'm being a little bit facetious, but yes, that is definitely a problem. It's, it's an ongoing issue and we. We advocate where we can, um.
Like I said, where do we advocate? Do we sit the province? Tell us what to do, or do we ask Mr. Edman to come counsel and say, hey? We're doing this job for you, how come you're still employing a bunch of staff to do that same work and how do we make a deal? What political, like, what is the right format? Is that a C A O or C A O conversation, but. At some point, we've gotta be. Clawing spade to spade.
Well, and we, we've done that some at regional council, not in the last couple of months perhaps, but when, when you're talking about the planning. Piece, um, the, the answer I got back from region was, uh, that. We still need our planners because we still have planning issues, we still comment on planning. And we still have, um, planning on our roads and planning on our buildings and. That is the answer that. All of us received.
It's good that you're stepping in here to Mr. Brenneman, because I was gonna say something that I couldn't take back.
My honest feel, uh, on this particular situation is that the most logical thing is to. Advocate to the province. The reason being is because while it is a bit of an unknown right now. Many regions across the province have been watching, um, what's been happening in Peel. Uh, with the transfer responsibilities. And I think it's widely understood, let's just take, for example, if. If regional roads. Were transferred down to the area municipalities in terms of full responsibility. There naturally would have to be a directive to the, from the province to transfer appropriate level funding capacity. I think, I think it was a missed opportunity that there wasn't a provincial directive. At the time that they made the decision with respect to Bill twenty-three. Uh, I can't say for sure, you know, uh, what they'll do, um, with respect to. What's happening in Peel and how far they will go with, um, some of the other regions. But I think, again, consistently, that's the best course. Is at a provincial level. There, as the mayor has noted, there's been discussions at the regional council table. There's been discussions at the regional C A O's level, there's been discussion at the planning heads level. And I think the only ones with the. The wherewithal to be able to provide a directive would be at a provincial level. That's the honest to goodness reality. And I think, you know, it's a question of whether we wait to see what happens with Peel or whether. It's natural to say, no, we don't wanna wait, um, you know, uh, we'd like to actively engage in this discussion, however, to that end. What would be required is, you know, it would be good if the other area municipalities were on board with the approach. So that we're collectively advocating together. Um, for, uh, for that transfer.
Continue.
Sorry, one more thing, um, cause I don't want it, um, hanging out there, so. I'd like to enter into the whole discussion around, um, efficiencies, because I think there's. Another aspect to be able to help answer, uh, Councillor Burgess, your question. Uh, you know, and, and, and the other directors, again, as Columba said, can, can, can help out here, but. You know, over my tenure here, you know, I think there's numerous examples of where in any particular budget year. Um, you can pull out things in terms of efficiencies. In two categories, one, efficiencies that actually help to improve. How we operate and how we do business, which maybe don't generate. Exactly dollar savings, but also make us more efficient in terms of how we're operating. So that hopefully we're not hitting up council for additional staff, uh, resources or contracted resources. The other bucket obviously is, is where there's, you know, legitimate, um, savings that could occur. But if I look around all the departments. Um, you know, actually, I'll start with finance. Um, I, I think, Colum, you would agree that, um. You know, by moving our investment portfolio in-house. You've documented for council that there will be savings with respect to that move. Um, whether you call that an efficiency or not, it certainly is a move. A smart move that will generate additional funds for us. Um, with respect to, um. Uh, with respect to, uh, a number of the departments. Um, you know, uh, let's just take either infrastructure services or recreation community services. I know what a lot of the managers do on a regular basis. You know, in evaluating the budget process is to look at how we're currently delivering service. I E. With staff versus contracting out services. Are there more, more cost-effective ways? Um, and more efficient ways to do it. With contracted services. There's also, um, there's also examples over the years where we've tried to find. Savings, uh, in terms of how we lower our costs with respect to the electricity, the hydro cost. For example, you know, over the years, um, there's been examples of where. All of the region and area municipalities have, um, changed over the streetlight conversions, right? That was huge savings that. Uh, were, were able to be addressed. Over the years, the township of Woolwich through the recreation and, and facilities area. Actually has done continued conversions of, uh, our lighting at, at our facilities, et cetera, to again, lower our hydro costs. An example, um, an example recently with respect to more about how we can get more efficient, so we're not. Doing such manual, uh, processes, et cetera, is, um, both. Uh, corporate services and finance are working through implementing a new payroll system. Uh, to be able to make, be a, that's more efficient in terms of how we operate. Uh, and how we collect information and, 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 and support those sorts of things. Um, so, you know, again, I, I could keep going. Um, but I think it's important for you and, and important for the public to know that, you know. We do have to go through these types of processes, sometimes I, I just don't think that we spend enough time. Making sure that we advise council, uh, on the changes that we're making, I mean, you know, again, just popping in my head. I know we've had our challenges on the water wastewater side. As we moved from a manual system to remote water reads, at least from a revenue. Uh, reconciliation, but I can tell you, um, remote water, you know, remote water reads. Is certainly more efficient than there are old boots on the ground, staff going door to door, uh, to do the old style water reads. Um, uh, again, if you. I have to think over the years, you could document, um, what have we saved in terms of not needing additional. Water and wastewater staff to be able to do that manual process as opposed to doing the remote water reads, so. Um, I think there are well-documented, um, things, uh, as I've said, that, that, uh. Myself or even the department heads can speak to at this meeting or any future meetings. But your point is well-taken, um, but I did just wanna stress that, yeah, I mean. That has to be part of our normalcy, that has to be part of our psyche. Is that we can't just rest on the status quo and say, oh, well, we've always done it that way, then let's, you know. Let's continue to do it that way. Uh, there has to be alternative ways, and, you know, I do agree. And, and I've, I've maintained the same belief as Councillor Bryant, that. There has to be ways in finding alternative revenue sources. That's the other source and the bucket that we need to look at. Um, a lot of municipalities, because of the limited realities of what we take in in terms of even recreation fees. Have to look at sponsorships, naming rights, things of that nature, or as Councillor Bryant has noted. What we push outside the normal legislated obligations with developers. And we simply negotiate with them to say, hey, things are tight. We know that you wanna develop, but we also wanna provide quality of life infrastructure for the residents at the right time through the development. We need you to upfront the costs related to the infrastructure, so those are the things I think we need to continue to. To explore in terms of doing things different, and I think Councillor Schwint, you know, talked about that earlier. Uh, we can't be keep doing the same old, same old.
Councillor Burgess?
Through you, Chair, and Mr. Brenneman. I appreciate your comments there and, yeah, I appreciate all that's been done on that front. You talked about the two different types of efficiencies, if I can just, again, touch on maybe a third option, it's just. Challenging you or Director Lynn, I know he's found this, it's just to scrutinize how things are done and how all the departments are interlinked, like we just talked about, I and I. Council kinda discovered all the losses there, Director Lynn on the T C A, we discovered that was getting missed between the two departments. Or is there other areas like that? Has you the head seen how all the pieces interconnect? What else can we find? What else is there that can be done better that way or that we are missing? I know it's not like, uh, something you can just go do tomorrow, but again, just keeping an eye on that.
Yeah, no, it's that, uh, no, your, 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 your comment is very timely through Mr. Chair to Councillor Burgess, um. And in fact, you know, that's something actively looking at, um, both myself and, and, uh. And Director Lynn in terms of. The organizational efficiencies in terms of the internal relationships that happen between departments that are involved in service delivery. Um, it is an area that, that definitely needs further scrutiny. Um, you know, because I think there's areas of, definitely areas of improvement, uh, that, that can occur there because. Um, you know, I think what can happen, you know, with the growth that we've experienced. Um, and the increase, you know, in the organization. Uh, and how busy people can get keeping up with the growth and the pace. People can, you know, um, not purposely at times get stuck in more of. Thinking about their role and their accountability in terms of their area. Whereas we need to find more opportunity to be able to, again, have the proper interrelationships, so we're all rowing in the same direction from that standpoint, so. No, the point's, uh, valid and well-taken.
Mayor Shans?
Yep, I can just jump in on that, uh, that discussion a little bit too, um. You know, we are growing, we are really rapidly, and if you look at a larger organization. It tend, they tend to silo even more, and so I think this is a really, uh. Good point in our history and in our, our time and organization. To look at ways that we can avoid that siloing and, and keep those, uh, those communication channels open, so. Thanks.
Good point. Further thoughts, discussion? I don't think that we've given enough direction to Mr. Lynn here, he's gonna be struggling when he goes home. Yeah, David?
You know, so, I, I very much, uh, through you, uh, Mr. Chair, to, uh, Councillor Schwint, I very much appreciate your concern with. Uh, what I had suggested of the approach, but I would just like to push back a little bit and say, you know. When you look at that list, you know, and I'm just to get a discussion going. Um, Director Lynn has put, you know, on that list. Uh, obviously, a number of different things that in the fullness of time need to be addressed, you know, we all know that. The twenty twenty-two point three two percent is not, you know, palatable, it's, it's not something. So the other way to look at that list, again, I think in some councillors have, have mentioned this. Are there things on that list that, yeah, in the fullness of time we would like to do? And, uh, you know, I will just pick one of them. For example, uh, Director Lynn has talked earlier tonight about the fact that. You know, there are tax allocation adjustments and there are utility allocation adjustments. When you total those amounts up though, you're starting to get into the significant area of when you talk about. Column is, uh, one hundred and seventy thousand is one percent tax rate now, approximately. Um, you start to get into that range, a- and so I also want us to have some fact that. When you're having discussions, and I realize, um, some of the biggest amounts are in the capital. But for right now, um, you know, he has noted, best practices. Would say this is how we should be budgeting. But I think you also have to say, if. Putting more money into roads maintenance and roads operating is the key. Can you ask Director Lynn, could these things wait and what's the realities of those things waiting, right? I mean, that's the type of, uh, discussion or debate even between council and staff. That we thought we might get into is, um, you know. Because tonight, you know, for example, if I was going through that list myself, I certainly heard that. On some level, infrastructure, asset management, dealing with roads, bridges, things of that nature, uh, are important. We've heard from some that there may be an appetite for some level of debt, uh, depending on, on, on what the realities are with the pricing and things of that nature. You know, and then there's also the issue around, uh, the winter control budget, uh, and, and, um, what level of increase, you know. Um, is, is required at this time. Um, and, you know, some of the other areas certainly. You know, in terms of, of, uh, what we're putting away. Uh, with respect to our reserves, the question is, you know, at what level do you want to, to be at? Um, and, and I guess you could, could always think of it and should think of it this way. Ca- uh, staff did their best job saying, here's the base, here's tier one, here's two, tier two. What you come up with is what you'd like to see. You know, it could be tier one point five and, and what that looks like. Cause remember, right now, in, in Colum's building tier one and tier two, he said. Well, this is what tier one increase is for asset management. Tier two you see is four point four percent. You may have a different number, right, uh, with respect to that, so. I just wanted to provide that perspective that there's a few things in there, um, you know, don't wanna put words, uh, in Colum's mouth by any means, but. Um, you know, there certainly is things on there that are falling in. there certainly is things on there that are falling in. This would be best practice. This is the best thing when, I, I know Colin's lens is always, as he presented to you shortly after arriving here, a long-term sustainability framework and, you know, sustainability plan, and that's the ultimate goal. So best practices are the things that we want to be mindful of. But there definitely is things on that list that fall in the, these should be done now and these could wait, right? But again, we don't want to put words in the mouth because it is the strong mayor's budget and it's council's direction. At the end, we're just here to help facilitate your discussion. But I just wanted to provide that perspective is if you added up a few things there, you are, you are starting to find, again, lower level dollars. But remember, one hundred and seventy thousand is a one percent rate increase.
It's a lukewarm hand up if I've ever seen one.
That's a question back to reserves. I think in your initial report column, you said that it's looked like reserves stabilized or projected increase a little bit this year, going from sixteen to eighteen. Is that with the addition of three million dollars of debt going into the operate, the working capital? Is that the way I read the one note? So really, reserves aren't going up. We just borrowed a bunch of money and make reserves look pretty.
Is there a question in that or a statement?
Just wanted to point that out to council.
I'll maybe point out though that we've taken on debt because we don't have the reserves to take advantage of those good pricings, right? So Mayor Shans brought up the good example of, you know, the quotes for road work is coming lower this year. Do we want to take on debt to capitalize on that? We could do that if we had healthy reserves. So that's why that's one of the priorities for myself is seeing those reserves continue to grow simply because that does give us the wiggle room later down the road to do that. So, but I, I hear what Counselor Schwinn is saying is like, if we're taking on debt, it, it begins, it becomes like a balancing act there as well.
Mayor Shans?
So I'm going to think out loud. That's always kind of dangerous to do. But when we set up the infrastructure levy and, and going into it, part of the discussion around that was being able to leverage funds from other levels of government. So if, if we deem roads as important and if we need to borrow for those roads, would it make sense to take some of that infrastructure levy, that hundred and fifty, whatever it is now, one point five million? Yeah, yeah. So I see in here, you've got future debt costs estimate. And at a tier two, you've got three hundred thousand. So if we take the three hundred thousand out of that one point five million in order to service additional debt, what would that look like? And you don't need to answer that now, but kind of put that in, in your thinking as a question that I'll ask later and, and see how that might, how that might fit in the bigger picture. Or maybe you can answer that now.
Through the, through the chair, I don't have all the analysis. That's, that's, we're trying to look for focus priorities and then run some of that analysis. But at a high level, just to Counselor Grant's comment and Counselor Schwint, it's, I think a lot of that is related to how we cash flow or how we fund certain things. I hate to say it this way, but there's no kind of magic bullet away from tax increases. If we want to do X millions of dollars in projects, we either have to put money away into a reserve and then do that money in future years, or borrow the, the money right now and then pay off the debt in future years with probably reductions from capital, like using part of the infrastructure levy for the next ten years in order to do the projects this year. The only problem then is we have less capital available to do those projects in future years. Again, sometimes it might make sense because the interest cost on that debt may be less than the savings that we're going to receive over the long term for the, those capital projects. And that's the analysis we can definitely do. I just want to try to, the way I think about it, it's like, I think about it on a, like a ten-year kind of timeframe, which is why kind of a ten-year capital budget is so important. And then you can decide, okay, if you can accelerate this project now, but then you won't have as much funding for other projects down the road. If we're just looking at kind of today's needs, we may not be saving enough then for future needs. But again, that's the age-old question of do you now or save kind of for future renewal needs?
Counselor Schwinn?
Of a director. When will you be able to provide us with a list of our capital spending for twenty twenty-five? Or is what projects are going ahead this year and which ones are being canceled? So we know what our actual spend is.
Through the chair. So I did send out, and I believe it's attached to the agenda, a list of the current capital budgets. And that was based on information received up to last week from department heads essentially. So that's the current status of all the capital projects.
Microphone.
All right. I guess I, I'm looking for protection from each department. Yes, I'm going to do this project this year. Add it in, or no, it's been mothballed for next year. So we know exactly what we're going to spend.
Through you, Chere Kadot. It is, it is a good point because right now I believe there's around two million dollars of potential either deferred or, or lower than budgeted amounts. We know from one of those graphs that I showed that it, the actual amount of deferred or carryover projects is closer to fifty percent, forty, fifty percent. So there's probably quite a number of projects that maybe won't get done. I just don't have that detail myself.
That should be pretty easy to get by the next council meeting from each department. Can I be request?
It is that direction. I would be fine with that. What does council think? I'm seeing lots of nods. Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
The only thing to, to add again is sent out the request to departments. And that was the most recent information that we received as of last week.
So generally speaking, we shouldn't really expect any deficits, what's available.
Department directors could take a deeper dive, but that's, it's the most recent up-to-date information that we received.
Are you looking for more detailed information?
Well, I guess I'm can, I'm a little bit confused. So I need, Mr. Pupay, can you just say in your department, are there any projects on the books for twenty twenty-five that you don't expect to happen? That haven't already been taken out of the list?
For those wondering, Director Pupay is studiously looking at his notes here.
Yeah, so just through you, Chere Kadot, then to, to Counselor Schwint, just doing a quick review of the twenty twenty-five capital program. So far, I see that Flamingo Drive in Grows Peak, which is an internal engineering project, carrying a cost of about fifty thousand, probably hasn't moved very far, just given the resourcing. There were some changes to the hot mix paving that council should be aware of. So I'm not going to go through, through that because the paving program was executed and there's probably nine hundred thousand dollars of savings associated with what the budget number said. So that's, that's an expectation now, given where we are in that program. The Maryhill Road Storm Sewer System for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a cost sharing project with the region has been deferred. So I think there's, there's a deferral there. We are, got the sidewalk program on the street currently, so that'll be closing and we can update council after that. Appreciate capital programming with the year for different times, right? So, you know, just because of one snapshot at a certain time of the year doesn't mean it's not going to be spent or deferred. But I, I think that, you know, the street lighting program, we're looking to relocate streetlights on Barn Swallow in this instance, just to support the future reconstruction of Barn Swallow Drive at some point. And the waggle, the waggle drain improvement project there is, that was a good news story again with, with excellent costing from, from construction. So we were able to generate additional revenue that we've moved on with Donkey Street and, and looking to reassign those funds. So just at a, at a quick look, I see everything being touched on, on this capital program, except what I said. So is, is it exact dollars? There'll be some carryover dollars that carry forward, certainly Breslau Drain One. But I think that all the projects here, I don't see anything that jumps out that's, that's generating significant dollars is, is a deferral at this stage on the twenty twenty-five capital.
Thank you, Director Pupay. Mayor Shans?
I'd like to give the chair the chance to, to make some comments if you'd like to. And unless you think that you, you're going to need me to jump in, I, I don't think I need to chair it.
No, I think that a lot of what has been said already really captures a lot of my thoughts. Roads certainly are, reserves are a big issue. When I'm looking at the list in front of us though, I'm looking at things like overtime expenses. Those are the types of things I would like to see go. Like I would like to see us right-size the organization. So we're not relying on overtime as a structural feature of employment here. I know that that's wishful thinking. But if I can just go back to what Counselor Schwint has said, much of what we've been discussing here, you know, if it does amaze things at all, is going to be relatively small in the grand scheme of things. And so I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned that we're going to continue to go down this road where we increase taxes by double digits and we're really not having that much of an impact on infrastructure or bolstering our reserves. So it's going to be a struggle. It certainly is. I wasn't lying when I said that this really is going to be probably one of the hardest ones that we've experienced in terms of a budget here. That's a lot of words and really didn't say much at all. And I recognize that. And I recognize that we're not making the life of Director Lynn very easy. Maybe I can turn it back to you for a moment. Is there anything specifically that, you know, is just weighing on your mind that we could potentially answer for you?
Thank you, Chere Kadot. One item just I think is probably important for council to realize is we've had deficits every year for the past three years, past four years, if you take away investment surplus income. Again, I don't know where the investments will land next year. It's some, sometimes saving us. Again, we don't predict that. One of my concerns, I suppose, is winter control and then some of this tax allocation. So my fear really is that we're not currently budgeting for the service levels that we're delivering currently. Because we have deficits, we had deficits last year, we have deficits this year. My fear is that there is a number, and I don't know what the number exactly is, that will need to increase taxes just to not have a deficit in twenty twenty-six. And that's just to really right-size the budget or the service levels that we're already spending. And I worry that with the base and that number, we're probably getting close to council's appetite for tax increases, leaving very little room for service level enhancements and everything else that we're talking about. Again, we'll prepare the budget for whatever direction the mayor chooses. But there is a, going to be a lot of constraints and I don't want to artificially, I'm just afraid of artificially cutting some budgets to hit a tax target and then have a deficit the next year. Cause I don't think that's going to help us either.
I personally speaking, don't know if I have a lot of, well, you know what, I'm going to go to Counselor Grant while I collect my thoughts here.
Thank you. So I have been thinking about the winter control budget for a while. I, it's hard to anticipate every year what we'll see for, for snowfall. That is the benefit, that is the joys of climate change, I guess, is that we'll have either exceedingly mild winters or exceedingly harsh and will be kind of subject to the whim of another, mother nature every year. However, that does bring up the level of service that we wish to provide when it comes to clearing snow. Fully cognizant that this is one of those tangible areas that residents can see their tax dollars going to is snow clearing and the kind of road maintenance. I've, I've had the opportunity to kind of share, exchange with Director Pupay, just reminding me kindly about our level of standard when it comes to what we are obligated to do versus what we, we do provide. And it does seem there are areas where we are exceeding the level of the service standards levels for road clearing. You know, like twelve to twenty-four hours clearance. We have roads that are high, class three and under. So I think class three, if I remember Jared's, if I look at my email quickly, requires twelve hours of clearance, right? So do we prioritize road three, like level three roads when we have eight to ten centimeters? And don't prioritize level five? Like that, that is the kind of maybe into the weeds that we need to get to is what is our area of, what is our comfort zone when it comes to, to road clearing? Fully knowing that I, I drive in Guelph frequently and it is a point of contention for me as a commuter. And I'm sure it's a point of contention for residents in Guelph to have roads that are snow covered for days, it feels at times, right? But that might be the reality that we have to, to present to residents that it's like, you know, if we want to address potholes and road conditions in the summer, that may mean that we're putting up with snow-covered roads in our subdivisions.
Thanks for that, Counselor Grant. It did give me time to collect my thoughts and they were right in line with what you were saying. In terms of service level increases, firmly of the opinion that there should be none. In fact, we could look at certain things like winter road clearing and maybe examine ways that we could actually reduce service levels, whether it's, you know, those cul-de-sacs, you know, the various roads that you had mentioned. I think it's worth exploring that.
I should maybe just add that reduction in service for winter control, I would look at taking those savings and putting into a winter control reserve, knowing that, you know, some years will benefit from a mild winter and other years that reserve could be hit fairly hard, like a, like a winter like last year where, where we, when we're still in that winter control season, that we don't know, we could have early snowfall in October, knock on wood. But it could happen that we may need to be digging into that reserve already. So.
Mayor Shans?
Yeah, just, just a little bit of background on that. We used to have a winter control reserve. And at some point, I don't remember which year it was, I don't know if you remember, David, but we, we decided that we would merge the winter control reserve with the, one of the operating, thank you, the operating contingency fund. And knowing that some years we would have, we would have to dip into the operating contingency to balance out the winter control. So essentially we, we, you know, maybe, maybe for clarity, we should not have done that at the time. We probably used it because we wanted to keep the tax rate low. Here we are.
And then maybe I can just provide some direction for staff for future meeting. Cause in fairness, I emailed this to Jared, like at the early part of council. But if we can figure out what we already provide as a service level, even if it's just a rough estimate of like, you know, we have eight centimeters of snow for a level five road, which maybe has, we have to clear it within twenty-four hours. Are we hitting, are we getting cleared in eight hours? Like, do we extend that to the furthest end of the, the, the bare standard? I'd like to know kind of what we're hitting as an, as a rough estimate for service and where we compare to the, the regulations requirements. And I know Jared, you may not even have that answer yet. I, you identified in our last email exchange that you would have to do some digging into that.
Yeah, to you, Chair Kadot, to Counselor Grant. So I think just, I think it's fair. Every municipality in the region likely exceeds minimum maintenance standards. There is a high degree of service for sure in the township of Woolwich, especially because we do touch every road in an event. Appreciating winter is very different. Everybody needs to understand that. Winter acts very differently. So, and, and Woolwich has a large geography. So there's different conditions that impact our ability to, to combat winter. However, I think we are around eight to nine hours where you can get around the entire township. And we typically do get around the entire township. It's not so much based on what are we anticipating to accumulate is snow in the forecast. There's more driving the service. And that's been like that for, for a number of years. And that's been like that for, for a number of years, but far exceeds minimum maintenance. I mean, case in point would be eight centimeters to 10 centimeters before you have to clear the road and you've got still a window of 12 to 24 hours to do that. So can you imagine now where we go around and we clear cul-de-sacs with blowers? So that's even an added benefit. And Waterloo does the same thing. So you're not taking a plow around and covering everybody in. You're actually going to that higher level of service. We have great contractors and go help blow, blow that out. So you've created this level of service. But now to reduce that and go backwards, I think, you know, that's something council needs to wrestle with as well is obviously the complaints will pour in because you have a, a certain level of service that we're going to reduce. There certainly needs to be a public engagement process, I would suggest, in that, in that realm. If we were to do something like that and maybe not see a cul-de-sac except for two or three times a year, where we see it every time now, like every event.
For me, what really stands out is that when it comes to the winter control is there's a structural deficit in there. So even if we're to reduce service levels now, it's only to eliminate the deficit. Right? We're trying to right size it there. So we really have two decisions that we have to choose between. Either we reduce service levels to eliminate the deficit or we raise taxes to bring it in line with where we need to be spending. Because right now it's a structural deficit. We're going to continue to go into debt with our winter road program unless we reduce services or raise taxes, so. David?
I think something else to ponder, you know, as you have your deliberations is on this particular topic. So if council supported as one of the actions, you know, right sizing the budgets to where they should be, you know, to the budgets, Director Lynn, it says, match the service levels. Column Lynn also mentioned earlier that, you know, in some years we've benefited, benefited from higher than expected investment returns. At times, I, I know there's also been years we, we benefited from higher than expected supplementary tax returns and things of that nature. If you think of the years where we get to a point where we structurally right size what we should be matching in terms of budgeting for the dollars to provide the matching service levels, right? In the years where you actually have higher than expected revenue, those are the years where you can start to put money into the reserve and reserve funds and start building them up. But I think, you know, this has been an interesting discussion because, you know, unless you deal with the structural deficit, as Director Lynn outlined earlier, those structural deficits will continue to be offset, hopefully, by higher than expected revenue. But that's not, I think, the way that we want to budget as an organization. At the end of the day, the most ideal situation is right size budget accordingly, provided you're comfortable, you know, that, you know, we're doing it in the right way, the most efficient way and the most effective way. But at the same time, then we can benefit from those higher than expected revenues by putting them in, in reserve funds and building that reserve backup in all that alternative format as well.
Counselor Bridges?
Through you, Chair, to Director Lynn. We're really touching on winter control, but I just want to get clarity. If I'm looking at our 2025 budget, like the previous years, the last two years, we were well under on our actuals for winter control, right? Like, the last three years, I think we've only exceeded our number ones.
Through the chair, I'd have to look at that, but from our analysis, we were either right on budget or exceeded our budget. And again, I'll have to, to see what you're looking at for at least the last three years. But
Yeah, I just
I will have a, a look at it, but to, to Counselor Kadot's point, the way we were looking at it, again, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sharing the screen here, but that we're, we're likely overspending in winter control every single year. One of the items on there too is cost allocation. So I don't want to get in too much into the weeds, but we don't actually budget for a lot of the costs in winter control directly. We budget to what's called a cost allocation tab, which we put all of the costs in there and then we allocate the costs to different services in that budget. And there's some nuances around that, that we're not allocating the costs fully or correctly in some of those. And those are other areas that are driving some of those costs. But I'd love to have a deeper dive into the winter control one that you're seeing.
And then perhaps Director Lynn, you can remind me, I think at our last quarterly kind of review, we were anticipating that winter reserve being over budget from what we budgeted for last year, knowing that we're still in the winter control season.
Through the chair, to Counselor Grant, yes. So right now, as of today, and we're still, a snowflake hasn't fallen. We're somewhere around $450,000 over budget already this year. So every dollar that we spend from here to the rest of the year, we're going to be over, essentially. This is a, it was a very severe winter, but as I explained to council during the Q2 variance report, our, our scale of deficit was much higher than other municipalities because we've been under budgeting essentially for winter control. So as a proportion to budget, it's one of the highest in the region and we don't have that reserve to, to draw from. In future, in future years, it's likely, it hopefully won't be as bad as this year, but it's almost certain to be in a deficit, even if it's more of an average or moderate winter.
It is 10 o'clock, council. Not seeing anybody vigorously raising their hands here. Do we want to move on? Do we think that we've given enough direction? No takers?
Maybe if we move on, if we decide to move on, I'd just like to maybe take a moment to voice my appreciation for Director Lynn's work on this. This is not an easy task. We grapple with the intricacies of our budget and Director Lynn is very much our light in the storm on that, and I don't envy him that role. But he's also the bearer of bad news a lot of the time and it's not easy to be the messenger. So I just wanted to like, take a moment and just say we, I appreciate the work that you're doing and know that it's, it's a big ask that we're asking for you to do.
Well said. Mayor Shans?
Yeah, and thank you to council for your input. I've taken a lot of notes. I, I think I've heard what you've said and to the extent that I can help staff wrestle with that before the next, next meeting that they bring it back. Hopefully, we can have something a little more concrete that we can wrestle with here some more. Thanks.
So there is a recommended resolution for this to receive for information purposes. Counselor Grants, Counselor Bryant, all those in favor? And that's Carrie, thank you. All right, that brings us to item 6.1.2, water wastewater investigation update. So I'm going to throw it to David to introduce. Mr. Brenneman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to council, just wanted to spend a few minutes before I turn things over to Jared Pupay, our Director of Infrastructure Services. So a couple of points. Want to stress that, again, we're back before you because, you know, I think council made it clear that while the last update was appreciated, it was very high level. And I think council's concern was have their, you know, is there really sufficient resources, time, efforts, et cetera? You know, being dedicated to the realities of addressing the, the reserve and reserve fund concerns in, in water and wastewater. And, you know, to that end, certainly I've been involved more so in the process, working with the various department staff that are involved in this project along with one of our contracted staff that we've hired to, to work also with us through this project. To that end, what we decided was to, you know, very much get down to a granular level on everything in terms of staff involvement, number of hours, a number of properties. We also know there was concerns about lack of ability previously to quantify some of the strides that are being made, et cetera. But I think, you know, in summary, the essence of what we're pleased to bring forward tonight is the fact that, one, there is the necessary commitment of resources that are being made to this particular work. Mr. Pupay's report reflects on the fact that, you know, even in our operations area, they are doing work on this project when they could be doing work in other areas of our water and wastewater. And that's not to say that there's any concerns about us making sure that the drinking water is safe, et cetera, as our normal obligations. It's just with our limited resources, we are making this a priority. And we wanted to stress that by backing up some of the information with the data that you would have seen in the report. There also is a fundamental commitment to really working out in a much more efficient way, you know, the roles and responsibilities and how they're divvied up in terms of delivering the water and wastewater service. And those are improvements, you know, that we're committed to making as well. The other reality is that, you know, great strides are being made with respect to the I and I side of things. And that's important work that's underway. Unfortunately, the reality though with that type of work is unlike the situation where we were able to find an immediate rectification in a previous water auto flusher issue down in the Bresla area, near the fire station, this is going to be a lot more labor intensive and continue to be labor intensive in terms of boots on the ground, in terms of various departments being involved, et cetera. But again, the commitment is being made in terms of resources, in terms of process. And, and for that matter, in terms of the necessary tracking, monitoring and reconciliation, these are all things that will be important combined to make a difference in mitigating the current situation we find ourselves in. So with that, I'll turn things over to, to Jared to hit the highlights in terms of some of the actual details in the report.
And through you, Chair Kadot, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have. It's a perfect summary, David, thank you. So I want to, to, I do appreciate what David, Mr. Brenneman has, has shared there. And just to reiterate, this is, this is, this is, this has been a challenge. But I think it's, at the end of the day, I feel this is also, you know, a good news story. And this is all about the fiscal health and sustainability of the utility. So this has been a collaborative effort by a number of departments involved in this to create this report. And I apologize for the previous memorandum. There was lots going on. It obviously was too high level for council to really see the work that was going in, into all of this. But there was a lot of work and I hope that comes through in the reporting that there are still a lot of pieces being explored, but some finds and some really good finds have, have come from this. But I think all in all, every ounce of energy and effort that's been put towards this is moving us in the right direction. But the unfortunate reality is some of this does take a little time to start to see that. So I'm confident in that, that, that this will right size the ship, so to speak. But let us take us through a little bit of this, and I do not want to go through every item in the report. But I think some of the really high level pieces that are important because this is an exercise that staff have never done here. Certainly in my 13 years, never been here before to do anything like this, certainly not this involved in this in depth. I'll take you back to where we were doing paper reads in a book. You could only do that when weather permitted. Those books were housed in finance. That was then reported by one individual. She did all the billings at the time too. So, you know, we go from that to now Anova hosting essentially our, our remote read system. And, and there's been some transitions in, in there. So there's been a good growth, but there's still obviously attention needed here. So with that, we, 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 we put all of the emphasis on the water meter. We assume that whatever is coming into a property is leaving. So that's why the water meter is critically important in determining, in determining revenues for both water and sewer. It's pretty common in, in municipalities. So with that, we needed to first understand who had what? Where were all the water meters? Where were all the wastewater laterals and all that sort of thing? So that was Mr. Fairweather, who was instrumental in getting us on the right foot. He was able to put 100% of his attention at the time into looking at roll numbers, going through all of the individual accounts. And then that translated into GIS, which is incredibly important for all of us too. That is the wave that everybody has moved towards. That is something the township needs to continue to invest more and more in, in the GIS world. Because that is a wonderful tool that you can now put something like that and then share it with field staff to be able to go and corroborate, is this accurate? Is this not accurate? And that's what happened. So there was a lot of time and energy spent in doing that and truthing, what do we have? What do we don't have? And then that's demonstrated through the work and the attention that operations staff have. And I think we just tried to illustrate that in a typical year, you might get 91 service requests or thereabout on the water system or sewer system. And magically, we've had well over 300 in six months' time. So, you know, that, that's significant energy and, and attention. And to Mr. Brenneman's point, that has deterred us from other work that was, that we needed to get done. Some things that would have created more efficiencies, but this obviously was a high priority. So I just want to explain that to council too, that some of that work plan, we're going to look to carry forward into next year and try to, to continue to make the water system efficient with respect to DWQMS and those sample stations. And that's one of the unfortunate pieces that we haven't been able to get to. But again, I want to, I want to be clear that this was critically important. So from that, Mr. Fairweather then did a, a true thing of, and a deep dive into the 2024 budget, just to look at budgeting versus actuals. So again, there is another piece that is going to take some time to implement because a number of things are revealed. Also, water costs, rates, all kinds of things, what's being charged as Director Lynn has, as mentioned earlier, that's contained in this report. So you're going to see some movement in our 2026 process and our budget process for water and wastewater to start to move the needle in the right direction there too. So that's another piece that's going to take a little time. And then, of course, we have water meter replacements. That is a, a major program that has never been done here and you can see the gap. It's, it's pretty significant with over 2,000 exceeding 20 years and probably double that almost at 15 years. So there is a number in there between 50 to 20. We are going to focus in at 20, but this is a perpetual program. So you are going to see that likely before council here. I'm hoping in the next few months, before the end of the year for sure, that we're going to get into a multi-year water meter replacement program. And that will be ongoing for a number of years and that will just be a budget item. Obviously, there is a cost to aged water meters. They are mechanical, they spin the older meters, so naturally they slow down despite what anybody would may suggest. They slow down, they do not speed up. So they inaccurately read, therefore reducing revenue potential as well. The new meters, the census meters that we are installing are magnetic based. So there is no moving part to it. It simply has a battery that dies, but it triggers an alarm to say you've got 10% life left, 5% life left. So that's, you know, important to us too. The problem with those, if you don't attend to them, they simply stop. Water continues to flow, but they stop. So, you know, pros and cons with each system, but, but of course, then that just bleeds into the importance of the replacement program. So those are some things that, that were highlighted, that we're moving towards. And another piece of this that involves development services and us in finance too is just the, 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 we'll say the cradle component of the, of the water system. Because we need to look at a cradle to grave approach, obviously, with all of our assets. But the implementation or the installation of the water meter through new development. So because the township was focused on customer service and, and resourcing was always a challenge, it was decided that development communities could simply install the water meters at their leisure. That helped them with respect to occupancy and timing. And there was a cost and they just paid that cost and there was about a 15% administration fee. Excuse me. And so what we've realized now, as we grow and get larger, there needs to be more oversight. Not all developers are created equal, different processes, it becomes cumbersome. And it has, it had fallen to the building department in development services. It's not really their expertise. There is nothing really governing them through the building code regarding water meters. So it naturally seemed to make sense that the infrastructure services department would look to take over the installation of water meters. So that's another piece that we see. There will be a cost though to that from a development perspective. But that would be something that we would get into a multi-year contract as well and have qualified plumbing contractors go in, install meters and work that out. And then that would be the care and control component from infrastructure services, creating then the billing accounts with finances support and moving forward. But that care and control is important because it's far more efficient. We know what needs to be, how it needs to be installed. We know the information that needs to be required. And when you leave that, unfortunately, it's sometimes to various private developers. It doesn't always work. Some it works very well, some it doesn't work as well. And you run into challenges. You run into meters that are associated with wrong properties. So that you have inaccurate billings. We've come across a number of those situations, too. And you don't know until you know. And I think that's the, the Coles Notes version of the reporting essentially, is that once you start doing a dive, you start realizing all of these little areas that start to add up to, you know, a pretty cumulative effect. So good news. I think this is all good news stories at the end of the day. We'll never espouse to be doing everything perfect all the time, but we certainly can improve things when we are aware. And I think the, the other key component to this was I N I, inflow and infiltration. The township has struggled with inflow and infiltration. For a number of years, we unfortunately have smaller systems, so it's more prominent in a smaller system. Kitchener, Waterloo, Cambridge, I assure you have I N I issues as well. So we are not alone in that. It's just when you have that kind of a situation in a larger system, it's sometimes not as easily seen, and it's masked. Here, St. Jacobs is a, is a great example of where it's a small system. But I'm happy to report that we have found infiltration inputs, and we have located a significant inflow piece that we are currently and actively looking to further isolate. And we expect that by the end of the year, we will have, hopefully, that all determined. And then we can notify council on what plans need to happen, whether that's going to be simple operating investment or is that's a capital investment. I still think some lining needs to occur in St. Jacobs, and we are looking to put in lining program again into, into next year. But in all of this, we had paused water and sewer reserve investments in the capital program. We intend to continue that into 2026 to help right-size the, the utilities as well. But there are some investments, to Counselor Kado's point, you need to spend money to save money at times. This would be one of those that I would advocate to do. So I think the lining program is incredibly cost beneficial, and there may be some other areas we can do that in. Elmira, and we appreciate council's endorsement of, of some CCTV dollars. So that's closed-circuit television investigation of the sewers. And we are actively narrowing that down. Happy to report that 70% of all of Elmira's inflow and infiltration is occurring in two areas, so that's nice. And now it's just a process of continuing to, 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 to truth that and feel, find out exactly where those areas are. We feel Elmira is less of an infiltration, more of an inflow issue. So just for clarity for everybody, infiltration would be constant inputs to a system due to high groundwater. Age of pipe, cracks in, in manholes and so forth can, can accept water. Water finds a path of least resistance, obviously, and it can enter a system. There can be cross connections that continually bleed. We have cellar drain systems in Elmira. That is what was repaired behind the administration building. We had a blockage in the cellar drain system, and then it was migrating over to the sewer system. So that was a direct, what I could consider an input then to the system. An inflow issue could be weather-related. You may not see it every year. You may just see it at certain rain events. So that's another piece. You can also use it with rain. Roof water leaders could be directly connected. We are aware of properties that have direct storm connections into the waste system, and that was built that way. So not anyone's fault, and nobody nefariously did anything. That was the way it was built at the time, and I think that's important to understand that dilution was the solution for waste treatment at one point in time. And there was really a, a smart builders back in Elmira to do the cellar drain system. Now we know that treatment facilities are that good. We do not need to be treating clean water, and it costs everybody money. So all in all, a lot of effort and time, I hope that comes through in the reporting by a number of departments. This is a focus, and we are excited actually to be, to be able to, to start to right-size these deficits. And we would see that hopefully happening month over month. Certainly, I think we need to see the end of 2026 to get a really good story there. But that's what we're, we're counting on. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thanks, Director Poupé. If you don't mind, I'll just start by asking, you know, this is good news. Obviously, this is really good news. Would it be worth exploring an expansion of the program? Could we explore this in other areas that would also save us money? Or is there a point where the cost benefit kind of weighs to costing us more than it would ever benefit us to continue to do that?
Yeah, it's, it's a really good question, Teacher Kado, to all of council. So the township had a history where they were looking to do what's called a third pipe system, and they were purposefully doing reconstructions of areas with high I N I. And the intent there was to pick up this and put it into its own system. There was a few of those projects that happened, but it was quickly realized that the cost of treatment was far, far cheaper than that capital investment to do that third pipe. So there is a balance. Absolutely. You're never going to have a fully tight system. Anywhere between probably 10 to 15% of some form of inflow and infiltration is probably not unreasonable. We're far from that, as you see in the reporting. There's 40%ish or more overall. I think we're around 43% total. That's not an acceptable number. So I think there's certainly investment there that's going to make a lot of sense. But as far as is there anything specific that I can point to? I think that we have, we have really good contracted staff right now, and we have attention to this. So I think what I would ask council to do is just let some of this flow out this year, pun intended, you notice. And then we could, and we can come back with a bit of a game plan later this year and more feeding into the 2026 capital budget for what kind of investment we may need. And we can have that discussion during deliberations.
Any other questions? Counselor first.
Through you, Chair Kado, to Director Poupé. You talk about having the 314 work orders this year already for six months, and now we have that G I S mapping. Could you just touch on kind of where we're at in verifying the water meters in all these locations? Like, we've had some that were installed backwards or not installed at all with this new program. Have we got to most of the township, and how soon do we find out now if one is offline or whatever it may look like?
Yeah, through you, Chair Kado, to Counselor Burgess. So I think we've made great inroads on that. I can't give you the exact percentage where we are. But what I can tell you is when we started the process, the list was lengthy. So what would happen is finance would report to us and say, hey, something's not quite right here. And we'd have this list of 150 properties to go investigate. Well, that list continues to shrink over time, right? So it's not to say that there aren't issues there. I think the report also speaks to some further investigation with respect to Anova. And, and we may have a partner with the city of Waterloo to further look into some soft wearing systems that can help with meters that are offline or meters that are, are potentially leaking. So that could be a bit of a customer service piece. Neither of us have that, and we both run the same system, so I want to be clear about that. Woolwich and the city of Waterloo are both using the same system and both using Anova as a host. But there's some IT work that we think could be a good benefit. And I tried to, I think it was about $11,000 annual fee that may be required as part of that. So that's something we're also going to bring forward. That can further help identify some of those, because we have had situations where a meter hasn't been installed. You know, through building permit issuances or anything like that, too. So I'm, I'm happy, and I, I don't, I just don't have an exact number on where we are. But all of these are being resolved. We are attending. And unfortunately, the hook is if we don't get action, we shut the water off, which generally gets results, right? So that's, it's just we don't jump to that, you know, I don't think that's fair for lots of reasons. But certainly, you know, when the threat of that becomes real, nine times out of 10, we get, we get attention, and we're able to resolve the issue. Sometimes it needs contracted services identified in there. But generally, every time we are notified of something, we are able to address it in a reasonable timeframe. So that's good news. Before, we just didn't know. We, we just weren't necessarily always generating those, or they would be the same generations, and it wasn't being able to be corrected. Now we're able to at least get notified and then provide a corrective action.
Just one more question here before the other council members talk. Just a bit of curiosity on the new meters. If I'm not mistaken, we struggle to always get out to every location to get our readings, and often it's estimated. Is it going to be a lot more contractor work or staff to keep track of these meters? Like, are we getting the alarm notifications right away when the battery dies? And how soon can we get guys out? And I just see that being an issue, or do the batteries last for 30 years kind of thing?
Yeah, through to Counselor Burgess. So I, I don't have the life cycle, but I think, I think industry practice is going to say around 15 to 20 years, right? So if we, again, that's why we picked 20 for now to start looking at. But I would say that it, it, there's, they, it's going to be a much improved process internally, which is going to result in more efficient recouping of revenue for sure. Having a contractor install it on our behalf helps us, because it's, it's a narrow field of what we need. We're not then relying on a different builder, different developer to provide anything. So it's very clear, because a lot of what we're into is it's just missing information. Finance can only do what they can do if they have the proper information to invoice, right? So, so a lot of it is what we found out. It's just, it, it's been installed from day one improperly, wrong address, something hasn't lined up. So I don't see a complication. I see it being a much smoother process. And we also have an internal department right now that's more or less responsible for that install, that that's not really what they are set up to do either. So I think us taking it over, utilizing contracted services. I mean, at some point in the future, you likely have water meter installers. They have them at larger centers all the time. Kitchener would have licensed water meter installers, and that's the predominant job title that they do, right? So, you know, you can see the evolution, but for now, contracted service would be how we would have to attend that. Again, I see that as a more efficient approach than, than, than creating any more complications. I think we'd be much better. Of course, nothing's foolproof, but I think there's more checks and balances there.
Thanks, Director Poupé. Any other questions, council? Yeah?
More on this. Looks like we're making progress in, I say, big issues, and that's going well. I'm wondering two things. Is there some sort of a KPI indicators that staff are looking at on a monthly basis to say, yep, this is working or no, it's not working, a percentage of water lost? Like bought versus sold, infiltration, that you can look at on a monthly basis and say, yep, we're improving. We're getting worse benchmark against. So that's something council can see on a quarterly basis. Give us, I think us in the community confidence that we're trending the right way, and it's a good monitoring system. And then I read an article in the paper a week or two ago about a town in Quebec that lost 40,000 liters of water out of fire hydrant. Would we notice that?
Yeah, through Chair Kado, these are good questions there, Counselor Swift. So on the first part of the question then would be, I think that, that was, tried to be explained a bit in the reporting, too. Through budgeting, there's a number of pieces, right? You're never going to be perfect on what you assume you're going to sell versus what you're going to buy, right? Like, there's always going to be some thumbing to that, right? But I think what we've identified is we could probably do better on that. And I think you're going to see that going forward in the 26 budget. But there's always going to be work to do. I think that was identified in here, that we, as part of this process, we've identified some improvements in the budget area that we can do to better right-size what that is and look at those rates in more detail as well. So there's also what Director Lynn said today about the allocation side of things. That impacts obviously the utility rate as well. So I think those pieces I'm going to lump together. There is work there to be done through budgeting that's going to help in that, on right-sizing some of that to what makes sense. There's also the component where monthly billings or bimonthly billings, you're going to corroborate what the region versus, so there's that piece, too, that finance is going to be doing that looks at sort of, is this generally in line? Again, it's not going to be perfect, but are we way out of whack, right? So that's, that's something that all, also is an improvement in the process that we're, that we're undertaking. On the water hydrant leaking for 40,000 liters, I hope to heck that we would be able to see that. But, you know, there's always loss in a system. When we flush a system, we flush a hydrant. Like, that's what you do to regenerate the chlorine residual. It's flushing. It's wasting water, right? And what you do, and you need to report to the M E C P on the wasted water that you utilize. But that is something, too, that, you know, do you try to budget for? Fire when they attend a site, you know, they're, they're not, the last thing they're thinking about is how much water am I using? No, but they do do an estimate of the fire or the water used to, to attend that fire. And again, we need to report on that. And is that part of the budget? Sure, it should be. We should count for some kind of variance in that, too. But that's, again, I think we're the healthy reserves, and we're back to fiscal health of the utilities. These impacts don't spike like they're doing now. You try to flatline that. So we're way better on the, on the budgeting side of things. And I think you're going to see this in that right direction and moving to more flatlining budgets, where you're not seeing these spikes. And I would like to, if I can, use the soapbox for a quick second to say, ideally, that's for all of our assets, right? Ideally, we have a proper investment that lets us put into the bank when we're not spending, because we don't need to based on the condition, but we can pull out of that bank when we are needing to invest in those things. So does that help, or I don't know?
It's not quite enough for my, I guess, conscience. I'm thinking on a quarterly basis, I know there's going to be lots of water, 5%, 8%, whatever it is. But if every quarter we see what that figure is, it's 8%, 8%, 8%, good. If it's shocking higher, we're going to be asking questions as councils will come.
Okay, so, so maybe I'll do it this way, then. Existing, what the true thing of the 24 to actuals for water was showing about a 9% loss when Stephen Fairweather went through that. Pretty reasonable. Like, that, that seemed reasonable. It wasn't out to lunch. But there's a number of factors that, that kind of created the 9%. Was it the most efficient? Absolutely not. But in the end of the day, and it ended up working to 9%, right? It's kind of what the finding was. But what we can do is we can do a better job of that month to month to month, being more accurate. Inherently, we kind of lucked out in certain ways. We overestimated in others, underestimated in other areas, too. But there was some thumbing. So again, I want to, I, I think that the accuracy of our budgeting month to month is going to be improved, because our, what we're taking in from a revenue perspective is going to improve based on the investigative work that we're doing now, because we're finding gaps and holes in improving process as we go, right? So inherently, it's just going to get better. Wastewater, though, if we look at wastewater, for example, from a loss leader perspective, as long as I think I've seen these bills, you are probably double the wastewater usage of water on a dry month and triple in, in wet. But it's been like that for a long time. So it wasn't until council forced the investigation to work. So thank you, council, to do that, for us to be able to truly spend the time and energy to find that. So again, moving that needle in the right direction. I just can't for, for a minute think that if this continued attention and the pieces that we're looking to implement is going to put us ever in a worse situation. It's not to say mistakes can't happen, for sure, but they're not going to be the kinds of issues that we have today. There's, there's just, I can't believe that's going to be the case. It doesn't make sense to me for that to happen. But that's my opinion. So I think proof will be in the pudding. And I think that what we were trying to demonstrate today, a little more quantifiable, and I appreciate you, you, you would like more. I think that's, that's fact. And I think that I just ask for a little more patience so that we can quantify that a bit better for everybody.
I think that that's a fair request. If I can put you on the spot, though, and ask how much patience we should be practicing. What could we expect in line for a report back on this? Is it something that we're going to hear back on in a month or two? It's going to be something that we hear back on next year? Do we have an appetite, counsel, for a more regular update? I know this is something that has come up. Do we have any official instruction, Mr. Clerk, as to whether or not this does come up on a regular? I'm trying to recall, and I don't know that we've instructed. I don't think so.
If, if I may, in the report, I suggested Q1 of 2026. And the reason that is, some of these things need time to flesh out. Billings don't happen every month either, right? So your bimonthly billings, too. But we also need some weather. That's the fact of the matter, too, to really close the loop on the wastewater system. We need weather. So we, we'd appreciate to be able to get through the fall, see some of that weather. I think we've identified some budget impact pieces that we're going to hopefully, well, we'll need to quantify and qualify why we want to spend certain dollars in certain areas. So I think that'll be an opportunity for council, and that's going to happen in November, that we're going to have to have some of those fleshed out. So I'll have to have at least some data there. But I would appreciate a more fulsome report if we could in Q1 of 2026. And then, if I may be so bold, is to say, and we'll assume that's a knock-your-sox-off kind of update, then we would look to go later on in the year for 2026, because I feel that we do need the end of '26 to really start to see some of these investments take shape, because we'll have to have a capital program early in '26. I think that's going to make a lot of sense. I don't know if, and we haven't thought this far, but there may be a pre-budget approval request potentially. Depends on what the find is. So I think that's really what, what staff's asking for some patience on.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, there is a recommendation to receive this file for information purposes as well. I have a mover, Counselor Bryant, Mayor Shance, solos in favor, and that's Carrie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brings us to item 6.1.3, T. Weber co-request regarding roadwork permit fees. Mayor Shance, this one's to you.
Thank you. I've had a, a number of back and forths with Mr. Weaver from, from T. Weaver Company Limited out of Bloomingdale, I believe, is the right place. His concern is fees. He's, he's paving a driveway for a resident, and we're charging fees to, because we're on the apron. to, because we're on the apron, which is township property. And I, I suggested he could come as a delegation, he didn't want to do that. So he provided this letter and asked that I, that I bring it to council. I think we had quite a lengthy exchange, but the piece that, that I, I'm struggling a bit with is similar to, we ask people to maintain boulevards, which is our property, and they're maintaining it. The apron is our property, we're asking them to maintain it and keep it in good repair, and then we charge them to do it. So I guess the, the, the question that I, that I bring to you is, when we look at the fee structure, is there an appetite to, and, and after just coming off the budget discussion, I realize that this is, is, is a bit awkward, but is, is there an appetite to, to look at those fees where it's a situation that it's, it's actually our property, but a resident is maintaining it and maybe adjusting those fees, or in this particular case, waiving it? And I would maybe defer to, to Mr. Poupay, who has, has dealt with this, and I, I think he has waived some of the fees, but maybe you can speak a little more coherently to how this operates.
Through Chair Kado, to counsel, that was coherent, very, very much so. I do, yeah, I think this was, this was an opportunity for us to sort of look at the process and do appreciate Mr. Weber's position in, in that. Driveway repaving permits in general are typically lower. I would suggest there's not a lot of compliance, and I think overall, what the objective is, is not to recoup vast amounts of revenue. It is simply to gain compliance. So with that said, we had last year done a deep dive into area municipal permitting fees. The majority of every municipality certainly applies permitting fees of various shapes and sizes. We really have municipal consent fees, we have a occupancy fee, and we have an excavation fee. But what, what this sort of prompted was us to kind of review that structure. And council will get that opportunity through the fees and charges update that's coming later this year. And we review these annually, so council has that, that opportunity. We feel it's important to have a fee, but what we found is that maybe we could do a fee that's something like a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Currently, it's two hundred and fifty dollars plus an inspection fee of two hundred and twenty-five. So it's a pretty hefty tab to Mayor Sean's point for the average homeowner to do. And appreciate they're spending thousands of dollars on the driveway. When you look at that scale, it's probably not. But at the same time, if we really are trying to gain compliance and try to cover some of the costs associated with staff, because that's the other piece of this, too, is you have private endeavors, and is it, you know, the public that should pay for some of those private endeavors? There's also the piece that we require insurance, so that is a liability and risk mitigator. Critically important that we get insurance coverage, critically important that we get traffic control plans. And that's really what it's intended to do, ensure, because appreciate, too, that we have situations we've come across where people have looked to install various things into public space that could become a liability and a risk to the broader taxpayer of Woolwich, too. So trying to balance all of that out, manage some risk, have some staff coverage there, because it is staff time that's being invested, but also appreciating that if you are seeking compliance, we need to make it somewhat manageable to do. So we are at the lower end of the permitting fees overall, when we looked at our regional counterparts through Kitchener, Cambridge, Waterloo. But at the two fifty plus the inspection fee, we felt that we could probably forego the inspection fee, and we could reduce the, the permitting fee to something like a hundred dollars, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. But that's something that we would bring forward at the fees and charges time, and we wouldn't necessarily need direction here. We do have an annual permitting process that there is a contractor in town that does a lot of paving, has decided to do. And what that has done is given a damage deposit, because that's the other part of this. If you have contractor that damages public space and then leaves, who's responsible for the damage? Unfortunately, the only people left there are the homeowner. And you can appreciate that that's not always a fun conversation to have. So that's why it's there, just to sort of have that review piece, but also looking for compliance. So that's what I would offer and suggest, that maybe we could defer a decision on exact fees until we bring the fees and charges back.
Mayor Sean, and then Counsel Bryant.
Thank you. Based on my conversation and, and Tim's conversation with other contractors, apparently they're not paying the fees. And so I guess my question is, how many driveways get paved that we never hear about? And so i- is it, is it fair to charge someone who, who may actually tell you that they're, they're paving a driveway, or you may find out that they're paving a driveway, when the majority of, of people just, just pave their driveways? Or should we be saying, look, we need to know, because we need to make sure there's, you know, nothing special that, that we're going to be doing there tomorrow? And, and, and maybe get more compliance without the fee? I don't know.
Yeah, through, through Chair Kado, then to, to counsel, or to Mayor Sean, sorry. So it, it, I appreciate that sentiment, if there are people that don't do it. I mean, there's lots of things we're obligated to do. The Ministry of Labor requires, locates when you're removing material by mechanical means. So that's how we became aware. So good on Mr. Weber to get locates, because there's lots of contractors that don't get locates. But I'm going to suggest that's not the answer. Just because people are doing something that they shouldn't be doing doesn't mean that we should also promote that. So I think I would like to confer with our insurance pool and bring that back to council, because that certainly is in council's bailiwick to decide if that's what they want to do. But I think there is a broader conversation to what the implications are. When we vetted our permitting, it was with the insurance pool, it is a requirement. Insurance is critically important, so it spreads the risk, because in the absence of that, we could be willfully accepting risk that we don't want to accept. So I think just because people are doing certain things, I don't know that that would be the answer that I would promote or encourage. I think there should be some form of process, but appreciate that council could certainly waive the fee, the fees. We are aware that the province requires licensing renewals with no fee. So obviously that, those sorts of situations exist, but maybe we could have that conversation at the fees and charges, and that would allow staff to get some more information available for council to make a, a fulsome decision, then.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Jared. I would like to see this bylaw reviewed, because one thing, I looked at this bylaw, and one thing that came to mind was to plant a tree. I believe there was a two hundred and fifty dollar fee. And if we don't want to encourage people to re-canopy Woolwich, we shouldn't be charging a fee for someone to plant a, a tree in the boulevard. That was something I found concerning. Just a comment.
Counsel Schwinn?
So, this one copy off card, I'm confused. We charge a fee for paving a driveway. What happens if I decide to put gravel on to recharge a fee? Or if I decide I want interlocking brick, now they interlock brick, is there a fee? Is it dispayment?
So, so we wouldn't permit gravel necessarily in an urban environment, through Chair Kado to Counsel Schwinn? So I think it depends on where you are, but it's all about the public space, right? That, that's the thing, there's no permitting required necessarily on, on the private side, but it's when you are entering the public space or doing any work there. There is gas utilities, there is all kinds of infrastructure in there. There could be proximity sightline issues, there's all kinds of things that the township needs to appreciate and respect from a public perspective. Again, this is public space, it's not private space. But sometimes it's difficult to understand where that lies, when you're, when you're in certain neighborhoods, for sure. Sidewalks help to delineate that a lot of times, but in other instances, it's difficult to understand where that is. So I think those are, are why there are permitting fees. Certainly, that is council's whim, if, if they decide that they want to. We would suggest permitting is important, but if council wants to deal with the fees differently, that's certainly going to be in their, their prerogative to do. But I would just appreciate getting some more information and having more wholesome discussion on this.
Could we replace Mr. Weber instead?
Pardon me?
Could we charge Mr. Weber instead? It's a thousand bucks here, do as many driveways as you want, just let us know.
We, we have an annual fee, that's what I'm suggesting a contractor has done. They said, look, we want to do it, we want to do the right thing, but we don't want to pay this over and over and over. And they said they do a lot of work. So when they looked at the economy of scale, they're like, will you give us a break if we, you know, if we go in for an annual fee? And we're like, absolutely. And that's something we can continue to review and say, hey, let's make this more palatable for compliance. Because again, it's compliance, but if we do an annual process, like if, if Mr. Weber comes back and says, I do five to, you know, fifteen driveways a year, and he, 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 he points out the economy's difficult, so that, you know, anybody who's looking to do this work, he wants to jump on it, right? And it's a competitive market, that, there's no fact, like, that's a fact, we know that, we see that in our own projects, we appreciate that. But, you know, if there's an economy of scale that, you know, annually, on January first, contractors want to come in and pay a, a nominal fee, and that covers them, I think that's something that we should explore and entertain. But I will need a little more time to come back with some of that, that's all I'm suggesting.
Counsel Grant?
Thank you, I would agree with Counsel Bryant, I'd like to see this come back. Knowing that by asking that, that doesn't really address Mr. Weber's problem, which is the two hundred and fifty dollar fee. So I'm wondering if there's an appetite for council, oh, I see Jared has.
Sorry, Mr. Weber paid.
Oh, he's already paid?
Correct.
Okay.
It's completely taken down, he just, he wanted to make the point, so he did comply, and I thank Mr. Weber for that. But he just wanted to, to further make the point that he still didn't feel, he's paid under protest, essentially, I would say.
Okay.
But he did, he did cover the fee.
Okay, then, never mind. But yes, I would like to see this come back, and there's no need to do anything else further if he's already paid for this.
If I can offer my two cents, I, you know, what Mayor Sean said really resonated with me. I wouldn't be in favor of penalizing the residents that are really trying to follow the rules. And this is something that I've experienced in Almyra with the curb cuts. You know, people are going and they're cutting their curbs to make their driveway bigger. It's not allowed, but people are doing it. And then when people ask to have it done, they're denied and told that it's not allowed. Meanwhile, all of their neighbors have this, you know, nice, long driveway. So we're seeing the same thing here, whereby people who are trying to follow the rules are somewhat being penalized, or they're being charged the two hundred, the five hundred dollars whereby people who are just doing it are getting away scot-free. So that's kind of rubbing me the wrong way. I, yeah, so I know that this is coming forward, there's this commentary at this point, but I, I welcome those conversations when they come. Seeing that it's ten forty-four, clerk's going to kick us out of here soon. Any other discussion on that item? Seeing none, we will move on to other business. We have mayor's report on regional matters.
What did we do at region today? Anything specifically to Woolwich? The airport is celebrating its seventy-fifth anniversary this year at that location. It started in nineteen, I think, it's the twenty-nine on Lexington, and moved to the current location seventy-five years ago, and is very optimistic about the future, even though the airline business is, is up and down. So I, I don't have a date for celebrations, but watch for, for those things coming up. And the other thing we talked about was the automatic speed enforcement. And as, as part of that, Mr. Spooner talked about township speeds. And he and I had spoken about that some time ago and asked for some kind of program for coming into our settlement areas. And he said that there should be something forthcoming this fall with some signage, and, and then further, by the end of the year, a rural strategy for, for speed. So, that's the Reader's Digest version.
All good news, thank you very much. Any council reports or updates? Seeing none, any, any movement on the outstanding activity list? Seeing none. That brings us to the end of our meeting, so on behalf of council, we thank all of those who tuned in, as well as those who came in person to participate. Would anyone like to motion to adjourn? Nope, we're staying, it's official. Thank you, Counsel Bryant, Counsel Burgess, all in favor, and that's carried, thanks, everyone.